I'm going to call to order this June's third 2024 meeting of the City of Concord's Finance Committee. I'll just note for the minitakers, minitaker, that Counselor Foot and Counselor Keach are both stuck in traffic coming up from the south. Apparently it has been some sort of an accident or something on 93, which is tying up traffic. So they will arrive when they arrive. I'll also note that Counselor, Mayor Protem Seku is excused.
Okay.
All right, well, good evening. On this work, during this work session, just so the people understand what will happen, we're going to take what we've learned during the public hearings that we've held and also during the city manager and city staff's presentations. We're going to talk about whether we want to make any changes to the city manager's proposed budget. Then we are going to hold public here, then we are going to adjourn from this committee and reconvene as the city council, hold public hearings on what has come out of our work session, and then have a vote on the budget. One second, please. Could you get a copy of this down to the monitor?
Oh, sure.
City councillors will see that I have placed a handout sheet at their places. These are my proposed modifications to the city manager's proposed budgets. In the general fund, I am proposing adding $150,000 for events. This was something that the Greater Concord Chamber of Commerce asked us to repeat. If you recall, we funded that for the first time last year, and it has generated a number of community activities, both some that have taken place and some that are coming up. The chamber felt very strongly that this was something that we should continue as an economic development, economic activity generator. Also, there is a $14,000 decrease for human services software maintenance. This is a correction to double budgeting that the manager mentioned during his presentations. So this is actually a correction. Under the revenue line, I'm proposing taking the $150,000 for the activities grants from the Economic Development Reserve Fund. This is the way that that was funded last year, and I think that's an appropriate way. That will not hit the bottom line of the property, for the property taxpayer. I'm also proposing a $100,000 increase, actually, or rather, I'm sorry. I'm also proposing increasing the real growth projection by $10.3 million, which will create an additional $100,000. Also increasing, I'm proposing increasing the investment income projections by $100,000 and increasing motor vehicle registrations by $64,000, which are all realistic projections. This, these changes will decrease the tax rate from 3.89% to 3.5% increase, or $9.84 per thousand. And that is in line with the Consumer Price Index increases, which I think is appropriate since the city experiences the same pressures on itself as, as our taxpayers do and our consumers do. Also, there is a $70,355 decrease in the legal department's budget from revenues expected to be received from other communities. And that's in there to correct a typo that the city manager explained to us back on May 20th. So that creates a total operating budget for all funds of $117,041, $117,041,0591. Under the CIP, the Capital Improvement Project Budget, I'm proposing moving $200,000, $250,000 for CIP 515, which is golf course winter recreation improvements, from fiscal '27 in the CIP to fiscal '26. This is in response to what we heard from Ski the Beeve. They asked us to make this change so they could start fundraising for snowmaking equipment and, and I believe lighting. So that's addressing that request from them. So I will now entertain a motion, a motion for the general fund to add $150,000 for events to be funded from Economic Development Reserve, to reduce the Human Services Software Maintenance Budget by $14,000, to reduce the legal department and other communities' revenue line by $70,355, to reduce the tax rate increase to 3.5% by adding $10.3 million to the assessed value of real growth, to increase investment income by $100,000, to increase motor vehicle income by $64,000, and in CIP 515, move snowmaking $250,000 from fiscal year '27 to fiscal year '26.
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded, thank you. Is there discussion? Counselor Brown and then Counselor Brady Saxton.
Yes, I have been hearing from a lot of folks that are really concerned about their taxes. And I think the $150,000 for events, that was a one-time thing. It, it wasn't, I know there was a lot of movement months before and planning before that was proposed to city council last year. I don't think it has been completely transparent. I am opposed to that. I think if we have another $150,000, we should be looking at real ways to reduce taxes. Yeah, I, I would like more information, why, you know, what is, what is that going towards? Why are you proposing that? I have questions about all these things, but I'll start with that one.
Surely, all right. Counselor Brady Saxton.
Thank you, Your Honor. I was just wondering if you could help explain why there's a necessity of moving the $250,000 CIP 515 from FY '27 to '26 in order to facilitate fundraising.
My understanding, my recollection from the testimony from Ski the Beeve was that if that project was out as far as 2027, it was going to be difficult for them to go to possible donors and argue and make, and basically start their campaign. But they felt that they really wanted to get the campaign started. That's my understanding. Counselor Todd.
Thank you. I think it was Counselor Fantasy, okay, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. I just, I just want to say, give my thanks to you for your work in devising a way to reduce the tax rate. As was already pointed out and as we've read and as we just know, folks out there are very concerned about raising, rising costs related to their taxes. And I think that getting this rate down to 3.5% is even closer in line with some of the indicators that I've looked at. So for example, the Consumer Price Index, the end of April, shows that all items are up 3.4% from a year ago. And that includes food, gas, electricity, clothes, medical care, the whole ball of wax. That's 3.4%. The cola, the most recent cola, is 3.2%. The current inflation rate is 3.4% from one year ago. So I think that at 3.5, we're really right in that sweet spot, as good as we can get it. I would also note that, you know, to, you know, the need to eliminate $2 million from the budget for a zero potential, for a 0% tax increase isn't as easy a task as one might sound, it went, one, it one might seem or as you might read because it's not like we have a $2 million item out there and we can just say, oh, okay, no problem, we'll just get rid of that. We won't do that right now, and there's your $2 million. These would have to be cuts that would be, from my understanding, across the board. You'd have a laundry list of items that you'd need to cut from in order to be able to achieve that mark. And the other thing that we're up against, unfortunately, which is the same thing that households are up against, is rising costs. And I think that a lot of these, this, this rate increase relates to those rising costs, as it does every year. I had asked a question during this budget cycle regarding citywide spring and fall leaf pickup service. And we learned that the service costs approximately $370,000 a year, and that equates to about $25 a year on your property taxes if your property is assessed at $350,000. And I asked that question not to eliminate the service or to adjust it, but to point out to folks that basically we, we have a few options. If we don't want to raise taxes, we basically have two options. One is to reduce services, and the other one is to increase revenues. And so for folks out there who are, who I've heard from, who are reluctant to do both, they don't really want to see a reduction in their services, and they also don't like all these new apartments being built and all this commercial activity and so forth that's proposed, that really leaves us the only option of raising your taxes. So we are trying desperately, I think, to find ways to not do that and to limit that as much as possible as we go forward. So I would, I would encourage, I'm going to support the motion as Your Honor presented it, and I would encourage others to do so because I think it is as responsible as we can get going forward on this budget cycle. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Fantasy.
Thank you. I just want to speak to a couple of the items that you had in here. I'm very happy to see that you've got a proposal in here to have money in the budget to support local events. I think, you know, we talk about, to reference what Counselor Todd was speaking about, people I talk to want to make sure they maintain their services, but obviously they don't want their taxes to go up. Well, part of the way that we can do that is to make our city a more attractive destination for people to invest in. And part of that, from my perspective, is putting money like this towards attracting more people here, which is going to only encourage further development and hopefully more businesses who want to join the community buy a property and increase that real property tax revenue. And so from my perspective, I think that's a wise investment that we would be making by including that money in the budget. The second one would be, I think, shifting the CIP 515, which is the, the winter activities at Beaver Meadow from fiscal year '27 to fiscal year '26. We're very wise, doesn't really cost us anything, and to the extent that we are looking for partnerships with the private sector, with individuals and nonprofits, giving them the ability to go out and fundraise to hopefully fund much of the improvements that they're, that they're looking to do, makes a lot of sense to me. It doesn't cost us anything in the short term, and knowing that the city is committed to investing in that work in '26. Obviously, we can change our mind next year, but, but showing that we are interested in moving forward with that, provided that we can obtain the funds, I think makes a lot of sense. So I thank you for those two specific things. I did have a question, just to make sure I understood. The $100,000 decrease in property taxes by increasing real growth by $10.3 million, if you can just explain, because I don't think it's clear what's happening from what you shared with the rest of us.
Sure, I'll defer to the city manager to explain that from his knowledgeable standpoint.
So Counselor, the, when we put together, I could probably talk to all the revenue pieces at once, if you like.
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay, so when we put together the, of course, there's revenues and expenditures, and then if we don't have enough revenues coming in from whatever sources, then obviously you need to increase taxes to make up the difference. So in this case, what we have here is, when we, when we did the estimate of what we thought real growth would be back in March-ish, we took an estimate of what those numbers were going to be, and it looks like we're going to actually bring in $10 million more we estimate for the, basically look at all the developments that are going on and all the money that come, remember, take additional money out of the TIFs, would equal $100,000. Same thing with investment income. We try to take a look at what we think the federal rate's going to be and make a determination if, when that's going to go up and when that's going to go down. Looking at it, as we look at it today, we think we can also receive an extra $100,000 in investment income there. Motor vehicles, you know, will motor vehicle sales drop off and then will the registration fees drop off? We thought they, they would be over time as you get closer to the end. Remember, you're, you're budgeting for, not now, but you're also budgeting for, you know, 10 months from now, 12 months from now. And we think they're going to, they're going to hold steady through the year. So if you put all those pieces together, that's where we come, we come up with this additional revenue pieces. Sometimes you don't take these dollars, I'll give you an example. Two years ago, when you approved the budget, you, you had a certain number, and these additional revenues came in. The direction that I've received from city council is that when those additional revenues come in, particularly if, if it's after the budget period, when the, when it comes to setting the tax rate, we actually make sure those revenues are there, and we can, we'll, you actually have given me the authority when we're talking state to bring that tax rate down. So we're able to bring it down by over half a point, about, I think, two years ago, right?
Last year.
Last year. So it went from, so it went down over a half a point. So by taking these now, you're, you're, we're anticipating that, you know, it could, could be more, it could be less, it could be more. But we're essentially, we're, we're taking that tax cut right now. So, and I, and I think it is a, it's a response, if I, if I, I would tell the mayor, if I didn't think this was a responsible thing to do, I think this is a responsible thing to do, given where we are now compared to where we were in March financially.
Thank you.
Does that help?
That's very helpful, thank you.
Counselor Schlosser.
Thank you. So Mr. Mayor, I, I appreciate your effort to reduce the tax rate because I think many of the residents are getting squeezed by the property tax. So thank you for that work. I would make sure that, that as Counselor Fantasy said, the CIP 15 is framed as allowing general donations. So it says it, no change in capital resolution or bonding authorization, but I think the critical point is that we're just enabling the private group to, to raise money themselves. So that should be, it is, and you note here, budget neutral. I'm not familiar with the Economic Development Reserve. I don't see a pro forma on that or a balance on that. Can, can somebody explain what that is and where it comes from and what the balance is currently? If we're going to use $150,000 as a revenue source?
Sure.
That'd be helpful.
Mr. Lebrun, could you?
Good evening, mayors and members of the council. We have a group of trust fund and reserve accounts, capital reserve accounts, and every year we provide the city council with an MS9 and MS10 form. We'll get that to you in probably August or September again this year. So you'll end up seeing all of that information, and, and we can send you a copy of it earlier, too. But basically, there are reserve accounts that the city will, the city council will authorize depositing money into those accounts. Sometimes we do it as part of the surplus report in the November, December time period. Sometimes there are other issues that occur, whether a property sells that, you know, used to use or that had used some reserve money, that we'll put the money back in the Economic Development Reserve. So there's a number of different ways that those funds can go into the reserves, which allow the city council to, to manage that money in order to do special projects like what the mayor is presenting here. And we can do that in a number of different ways. If you think about, probably the biggest example is our paving program, so the neighborhood paving program. We put money, the city council puts money into that paving program from a number of different sources. Part of it's the tax rate, part of it's from some of the different funds that utilize it. Some of it is from the state grants that we receive, and it builds up those reserves a little bit. And then we were able to use that for the capital projects going forward in future years. So that enables the city council not to increase the tax rate in order to, you know, in order to get those projects accomplished, but you managing those reserve accounts in order to do all of that. And that's part of it with the Economic Development Reserve also.
May I? Do, a little bit? So I'll give you a couple, a couple examples. So you put aside the money in the Economic Development Reserve in case you want to have an influence on a project of some sort. So I'll give you two examples. When it came time for the redevelopment of the old Pennacook Tannery Mill, we used the Economic Development Reserve to jumpstart that project and get it to where it is today. When you did the redevelopment of Capital Commons in the parking garage there, you jumpstarted that to do the same thing. And then what you do is, once they get financially soluble, then you actually capture money back from them that loaned to those projects, and then you reinvest it in the, in the economy again. So very much like when, to, like a reserve that you just created just recently is, you remember, we received two large slugs of money from the state for, for bridge purposes. So because you have the Loudon Road Bridge, which the city owns, which is going to be $22 million in the ballpark, higher? Matt's telling me higher. So, but we, it's an 80-20 match. So we took aside those dollars, put them in the bridge reserve to use for our 20%, which we could legally do, use for our 20% match, so you don't have to raise taxes when it comes time for that. So it's, that's the purpose of how to choose.
Does it follow up?
May I follow? So I think it would be helpful for city councillors to have those balances, because I don't know what the balance is in the economic reserve or the bridge reserve or these other reserves. Maybe, unless they were in the budget someplace that I didn't see.
No, we give it, we give them to the city council every single year, and the city council received them last August.
So I see, I see.
And so every, so everybody, and if you go on to that agenda, it's all there. It's like, and it tells you what's in the library reserve, the cemetery reserve, the, I don't know.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a whole list of trust funds.
16 forestry reserves, each one carries a balance. And to give you an example, you'll see that there's revenue coming in, I believe underneath the cemetery reserve, because we generate enough dollars in it to help maintain the cemeteries. And that's what the purpose of them is. You don't, you don't want to try to spend on the principles in some of these. You're actually using the interest, and you got high interest rates like we have now, generate some interest. We take those dollars, use those instead of raising taxes. So again, back to keeping money in the reserve so you, during high, high interest rate times.
So maybe I could just request, follow up please. Maybe I could just request those August, that August meeting date, so we can access those.
Or we could just forward them to you.
That'd be helpful.
We're glad to.
Counselor Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That piques an interest in me. We have some sort of a rainy day fund, too. Like, what are the rules about when that is used and how that is used? And could it be used to help reduce the burden, especially for people of middle and lower incomes?
Well, Counselor, I mean, I'll defer to Mr. Lebrun or the city manager. But that's the, that's our.
Unassigned fund balance.
Yeah, thank you. It took me a hiccup. Go ahead.
I think that's what you're talking about, is the unassigned fund balance.
I think so.
And so the unassigned fund balance is basically the portion of the fund balance that the city has, that the manager went over during the presentation, that isn't dedicated for any particular purpose. And right now, that, or at the end of last year, that number was 22.4%. With the funds that the city council used during the year, it ended up being some ways around 22.1%. So, and those are the funds that are unassigned as, you know, not dedicated to anything. So I think that's what you mean by the rainy day fund.
I think so.
Right. So now, if you look at the FY '25 budget, you'll see that the city is, or the city manager proposed using $561,000 of that in order to manage the tax rate to the 3.89%. And then the mayor made a presentation to reduce it even further.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Mc.
Thank you, Your Honor. I also appreciate any amount, percentage that we can bring down on the community tax rate. I really am supporting the $150,000 increase in events. This was something that was very important because it not only adds to the city's vibrancy, but this, these events is what bring our community together, along with the economic development of bringing outside of our community, friends and family and businesses to the city. And to talk about this after an event has happened. What a great opportunity for families to be able to come downtown or go to the river or wherever the event's being held, especially the free events, and participate in an activity as a family with their community. So I don't think this is huge money, but I think it's money well spent. And I appreciate that that has been possibly put, putting back in, so I will be supporting that.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Creditev.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate all the other comments of the councillors, because it shortens up my list of things to say significantly. There is a third option to reduce taxes, but it's cutting employees. We're not really in a place in our community right now where we can do that when we have a shortage of police officers and a shortage of firefighters and EMTs and a shortage of CDL drivers for our winter plowing or driving any of our big rig trucks, and then also a shortage of lifeguards. It also hits our regular administrative staff, where we have more people that are doing more because we don't have enough employees at the table right now. Anyone looking at this budget would absolutely see it's compensation, the cost of benefits, the increase to our medical plan. These are reasons why these taxes are going up. And it has nothing to do with all the little things that are in the budget that help elevate that number as well. And that's hard to do, but at the same time, I think we as councillors need to be respectful of the fact that we're not going to let people go. They're still going to have jobs. That means we're not going to put them in a position where they're on the fringe when we are trying desperately to get people to fill roles here. The economic generator for the events, the $150,000, I understand it clearly, that's coming from the economic development reserve. That is the swap out. There's no impact to the taxpayer for this. And all it does is put our state capital on display for everyone to see all the great things that we have here. When we started doing events like this many years ago, I mean, for Market Days, they're celebrating their 50th year this year. It started because merchants needed to have businesses, business in the summer months. And it was a way to attract people off of the highway to come to the community. So 50 years later, we've adapted that ability to bring people into Concord to a way where we're using it for economic development, as in, that's an empty storefront, that's an empty business, that's an opportunity for an entrepreneur. If they fly into the airport, if they drive up on the heights, if they look at the housing that's available here, if they look at any opportunity in the state capital, it is just a generator that weeps oodles around our community. I don't think us at the table can ever forget that as a state capital, we might have 44,000 people that live here. We have more than 90,000 people that show up here every day because we're the state capital. And we are bigger than just the little community that we are. And I think that this budget is really respectful, not only to our residents, but also to our commercial businesses that are seeing the same challenges that we are. This 3.5% is residents and businesses alike. And so, Your Honor, for that reason, that's why I seconded it. Counselor, I'm forgetting your name, Counselor Todd's motion. And I support the efforts that you made here and appreciate all that you've put together.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Horn, and then Counselor Kurtz.
Thank you. I would echo my fellow councillors that I think the $150,000 increase is pertinent for the vibrancy of the city. I just would really like to have a little more transparency. I want to know what the rules, regulations are, who can apply, because I don't think it was clear last year. Or at least, people that asked me, I couldn't find that information for them.
Counselor, and I owe this response to Counselor Brown as well. The city manager and I have talked about, we're going to work together to pull together some shape around, you know, who can apply, how often they can apply, things of that nature. And also talk about how it's promoted, how the information is disseminated, you know, relative to the availability of the grants. And we'll share that information with city council after we do that work.
Before you start actually handing, I'm sorry, follow up?
Yes, follow up.
Before you start actually utilizing the grants?
Indeed.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be right on the top of my agenda. Counselor Kurtz.
That was my question. Thank you very much, Counselor.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you. After hearing everyone else's comments, I have a few questions. And I do see that events are, they make our community vibrant. We have the multicultural festival that pulls in people from multiple states. I know the Sunflower Festival attracted everyone as though they were bees to the flowers. So I think this is, it's a great thing. However, I would like, is there any reason why it has to come out of the economic development reserve now? And those people who have ideas for events couldn't come before council? Or we could wait until after you and the city manager have come up with the parameters for this? And then we appropriate that $150,000? It doesn't have to be this evening, does it?
I think, to answer your question, Counselor, I think it is the easiest way to do it, to include it in the regular budget, so that we're assured before the city manager and I go through the work of putting together the parameters, that we have the consent of the city council to make that expenditure. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Brown.
Is, are there more? Can I make comments on the rest of your thing, or?
Yeah, sure. Everybody has made comments about all parts of this, so go ahead.
Great. I just am unsure why we would move CIP item 515 forward. That is saying that we're, it kind of is communicating that we are in support of the winter operations when I'm not convinced that we really, in a climate, the climate that we have, cutting down more trees, it's getting warmer, we had no skating at all this winter. I don't know that this is a wise move to that, to say that we are investing in winter operations.
I will simply point out that what we're doing is moving that ahead to the CIP to 2026. And when we deal with the 2026 budget, that's when we'll make a decision as to whether to fund that in 2026. As you know, you know, as you know through your experience on city council, the CIP budget is extremely fluid in the out years. And what we do is, on a year-to-year basis, we look at what's proposed, we look at what's on the CIP agenda. And then during that fiscal year's deliberations, just as this year, we determine what we're going to keep in and what we're not.
Thank you.
Truly.
Any other questions, comments? Counselor Kurtz.
I'm going to.
Counselor Schultz.
That would be an upgrade.
Between Kurtz and Schultz and Macmara and McLaughlin, you guys have got me pinned.
That's really cool. I'm just going to repeat a few things that I've said before and then state my view. And that is, at a previous meeting, I mentioned the New Hampshire Fiscal Policy Institute. And I said this, or it was forwarded to all the councillors, that the hardest, the most difficult burden carried by taxpayers in New Hampshire is worse on those at the lower income scale. And there's a lot of reasons for that. In part, property taxes are the most difficult, or among the most difficult if you're underemployed, unemployed, or retired. Those are usually times when folks have the most difficulty meeting any obligations, to be honest with you. And I think the CPI and all the discussions on those percentages are really difficult, too, because of the increase in inequality in incomes. It has been a time of great prosperity for a segment of the economy. It's nice to see a $100,000 increase in investment income. That goes in alignment with things that, you know, we hear about the economy, that it sounds like, you know, and it is in a lot of ways. The income is, or the investment in corporate world is booming. But if you are even in the upper middle class, certainly for middle class, for people struggling poverty, everything's going up in the most difficult areas, in childcare, healthcare bills, student loan rates just increased. Loans for homes, not that there's a lot of availability right now, is rising. As a renter, on June 1st, my rent went up another $100 a month, while also our car insurance. I mean, I could do the litany of that. It is hard to assign that a true increase. And it, like I said, it's most difficult for those who are most struggling. And as a renter, my rent never goes down. You know, property taxpayers who own their property or in the process of owning their property, they may have decreases in years, and I think that's fine. I'm not jealous. You know, I just think it's a difficult thing that the biggest burdens of our economy, and I don't think this is the fault of anyone here, and there's probably no one in this room, but our system has continued to depend on the tax breaks for the wealthy at the expense of the rest of us. And I would still like to say, and as I understand it, we don't see opportunities for this yet. But I really would like to see ways to just raise taxes on the people who can most afford it, like the big box stores, like a mansion tax that is statewide in California and seems to be doing well. Massachusetts seem to be having its successes with that as well. And give the rest of us a much-needed break, because I don't want to cut anything in regards to our employees. You know, or anything to do with our community. If we're struggling financially, we still want to go to the Sunflower Festival or see the cars and all the other great things our community has. So anyway, sorry for taking a bit of time here, but I just feel it's important to reiterate these things that have sort of been peppering here at the beginning of my service. And I just would really like to, whether it, I'm not sure that it can happen in today's vote, but we have to find ways to reduce the burden on the most of us and offset that at every level of government for those who can most afford it, need to bear a heavier burden on this because they can afford to do so, and the rest of us need a break. So I don't know how that's going to, I would like to hear more thoughts before I'm decided on my vote. But there's where I stand.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Creditev.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate the concerns that you're bringing forward. There's a number of people that live in War III and other areas of the city as well that are renters. And they do rely and live paycheck to paycheck. In fact, if we were to look at our community, it doesn't matter what your income is, there are many more people that live paycheck to paycheck than those that are actually putting money aside. You can live in big McMansion, but if it's costing you a fortune to live there, you're still living paycheck to paycheck. Every dollar matters. I know in my own household, we call it the lowest common denominator because I'm married to an engineer, but it is the person that makes the least in our community that we have conversations around. And it's really based on, we have plenty. It isn't that we're rich, it isn't that we have more than other people, we have enough, and it's plenty. Other people don't live like that, and I'm very aware of that. In my community, in my area of the city, I have a number of senior citizens that live on a fixed income. They are super seniors that cannot navigate this complicated process called municipal government. When we had the pandemic, they didn't know how to pay a property tax bill without actually showing up to City Hall. They were the people that needed the most help. But they're also the people that were not taking advantage of our elderly tax exemption or our veteran tax exemption, or the exemption that we have for those individuals that are legally blind. We as councillors, we need to be, we need to be promoting that. And certainly, it's not for everybody because there are parameters by which you live in. But those that own their house, I'm going to tell you, the number one thing they want to do is probably die in their house. And so we should be doing everything we can possibly to hold their hand and walk through a very complicated process. It is sometimes filling out an application for an elderly exemption or a veteran exemption. Or at least having the conversation, are you eligible for? Should we call the assessor's office to see? If I can knock $80,000 off the value of your house as a tax exemption, you want that, don't you? And you deserve it if you've lived in this community and you meet these obligations. We as councillors need to be doing our job better. Maybe it's because we don't communicate it enough. It shows up on a public hearing, nobody testifies to it, we don't talk about it, we just accept it, and then we move on. But I think there's much that we can do in our community to help those of us that are around us. I think as far as the tax differential between those that have and those that haven't, I'm sorry, Representative, I think that belongs at the state level. I think that you need to provide us the guidance to be able to make such a measure. But then we are the live free or die state. We don't do or file income taxes. What's the deciding factor on a person's income? We're not collecting that information today. I appreciate the question because I do think about those people that are renting, that this burden is going to be more than the $30 per month that it would be because they, you got elevated $100 a month on something that's going to cost the property tax owner maybe 30. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Sorry, there was no questions in there.
I did notice that, but you were on a roll, so I.
Just cut her off.
I think she meant to say, would you believe?
Would you believe? Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Counselor Brown, do I see your hand up?
Yes, yes. I just would like to reinforce Counselor Horn's comment and request that those parameters for the economic development or for the event be transparent and that it might even be posted online so that everyone may apply, because I know some folks asked about it and were interested and could have availed themselves a great opportunity.
That's certainly my intention.
Thank you very much.
Counselor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just, I have kind of a general question, which I think is on the minds of some folks. I think there's some folks out there who might be hearing this tonight, who are hearing things like unassigned fund balance and reserve funds. And they're saying to themselves, wait a minute, how come we're not getting that back in a refund? How come we have to pay more even though you all have money set aside in these funds? How come they're not being released? Could we get the city manager or Mr. Lebrun to explain generally what the purpose is of having these funds?
Certainly.
From the city's perspective?
This is the city manager, Mr. Lebrun.
Mr. Lebrun, we can do it together, if you want.
So.
Welcome back.
Thank you, thank you. I think when you, if you think about keeping your financial house in order, right? And making sure that we have the strength of the community that, you know, we need to have in order to manage the operations. And I think, think about the pandemic just a few years ago. And one of the things in the pandemic that we were all grappling with at first was, what is this going to do to the community? And what is this going to do to the services that are provided? And we all worried, you know, about getting tax bills paid, things like that. And I think the city council really took that to heart. And I believe that in 2021, there was a 0% tax rate increase. And the city council used a million and a half from fund balance in order to offset that tax rate. And I think the following year, the city council used $1,750,000 in order to offset the tax rate increase. So I think that. to offset the tax rate increase. So I think that having that strength in the fund balance at that time, that was, you know, if there wasn't another reason to do that, that was, you know, the, we'll call it the emergency, in order to use, you know, part of your savings account in order to help support the operation, because you didn't, you didn't think you had the opportunity to raise money in another way, which would be taxes in this case. So I think making sure that we have that strength there is extremely important in order to be able to do that. When you start looking at the reserve accounts or the trust accounts, and the trusts and reserves are really kind of broken up into two different categories. So you have all the trusts where money has been donated for library or cemeteries or other purposes, or maybe there's money put in based on, you know, other sources that are coming in. And those trust accounts really are set aside for specific purposes, you know, and like the manager said earlier, you know, there's dollars that we're able to bring in to offset the expenses in the cemeteries. And we're able to do that in, you know, conservation funds, forestry funds, things like that, and they're used for those specific purposes. And then when you get down to the capital reserve accounts, you are able to put money into those capital reserve accounts to help manage the expenditures going forward, so that you understand that you don't have to raise taxes by, you know, in some cases, millions of dollars each year in order to support the projects that you want to do. I think the, I use the example of paving earlier as one of the good examples. That's a, that's a great example to use, because, you know, that's, you know, $2.5 million, 2.7, I believe, this year for paving, that if you didn't have those reserve accounts that you're able to put money into from a variety of sources, if that got added to the tax rate, you can see what that increase would be, or the impact on the tax rate. We've been able to use those reserve accounts by putting any surplus funds in for things like the recreation program, things like capital equipment, so in order, so that we don't bond everything in capital, even though we bond a lot, we're able to use some of those funds to help offset money that we don't have to bond. When the recreation center was built a few years ago, we had some dollars that had been set aside in recreation reserve, which are pretty much dwindled down at this point, but that helped to offset the additional new expenses that were going on in the recreation program, as well as some of the debt service costs, in order to manage that increase that would be on the taxpayer as well. So, so you're using it in order to try to manage the expenditures that you have, so that you don't have as much of a tax rate increase, you know, in certain areas, or you can, you can manage that tax rate increase over a number of years. And that's kind of the intent, I believe, that the council has used those reserve funds for, in order to make sure that you don't have big spikes in the tax rate, and that, you know, the increases try to be as modest as possible.
Could I try to put that in kind of layman's terms, relative to the current budget? So if I'm hearing you correctly, in the city manager's budget, we have 500 and...
61,000.
$561,000 that we've taken from the unallocated fund balance to use in this budget. That equates to a 1% tax rate increase, right? So what we've done is we've reached into that fund this year, so that the tax rate that's proposed by the city manager is 3.89% rather than 4.89%. Am I correct?
That's a very, that's a very good analogy.
And so, back during COVID, when we were concerned about keeping the wheels on city government, we dipped into that fund and took the 1.5 million and kept the tax rate at zero to lessen the impact on people who were scared about being able to have their job, who were scared about what was going to happen with their health, and we held that by dipping into that fund. Am I also correct that when bonding agencies and rating agencies look at us and decide how much to charge, or how much interest we're going to have to pay on our bonds, that they also look at what kind of undesignated fund balance we have? Does that have a bearing as well?
That absolutely has a bearing. It's one of the key components that they use in determining, you know, what our rating is going to be. And they look at what our fund balance level is, and is that fund balance level growing, staying the same, or reducing at any significant level?
And what is our, what is our rating right now for the rating agencies?
We have a AA+ rating, which is a half a point below a AAA rating, which is the best rating that you can have. So we're, we're half a point below the best rating we can have.
Thank you.
So, so let me round this up. So you recall, the current contracts for all the city employees is 4%. When they did those two years of 4%, they knew they were taking under-market 4% increases. The wages going up around the country were much higher than 4%, and the city employees took 4% over two years. So I know it's 3.2% now, or 3.4, whatever the number is, but you're going to remember those years, go back a little ways when it was 7%. They didn't, they didn't get those wages. Health insurance is up 10%. So unless you want to cut health benefits from employees, which would make it much more harder to track, particularly police and fire, is 10%. Every one of you can take a look at your neighborhood and find probably a half a dozen streets that desperately need to be paved. So you've been slowly increasing the paving program. So you have a half, you know, the half a percent increase in, in the quarter percent increase in the paving program. Pennacook Library and Activity Center, we're increasing services in downtown Pennacook, hours of the library, and adding community centers. So when I talk about cutting service, you're talking about increasing services. That has a cost. That, you can't do that without increasing taxes. Citywide Community Center, we're talking about increasing the hours of the citywide community center. We reduced all the rents, remember? That brings in less revenue. The less revenue you bring in for rents, the more you raise taxes to cover those costs. Or you could increase the rents and the fees that we charge people. You have, you also have all kinds of free time that was given out, again, you lost those revenues associated with that. When you, when we had the federal $900,000 for the ARPA funds that came in the American Rescue Plan, what did a lot of communities do? They hired additional staff, they did all kinds of staffing problems, and now you can see those communities laying people off, laying teachers off. You don't see that here, because you didn't, you used those dollars, city council used those dollars as revenue to keep the tax rate down. The trash contract, by all rights, that should be going up 2% on the tax rate alone this year. It's going up $300,000. It's going up, was that a 2/3 or 1%?
Yeah.
$300,000, so that could be 2% right there. We knew that two years ago, when we did the contract, what it was going to be. So you knew preparing for this year that the tax rate was going to go up to cover that. Use the 561,000, and as I mentioned during the presentation, if you look at 2020, back from 2020, you averaged out the tax rate increases from 2020 to today, if you do 3.89%, which I'm sure you won't do, that's 2.7%. Look at the, what the cost of living increase has been up around this country. It's certainly a lot higher than 2.7%. So you have, without a tax rate cap and all this other funny stuff that other communities do, you've actually achieved numbers much beating their numbers, and came in with 2.7 over the last, this will be six years. So congratulations.
I...
Well, actually, Your Honor, I do have a follow-up.
You have a follow-up?
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. The, the follow-up is, for the unassigned fund balance, and we, the mayor had mentioned the reduction of $571,000 that we've used this year, could you tell us, Mr. LeBrun, what, and I know the bonding rate is involved in this as well, and we want to maintain a certain amount, what, what is the reasoning behind maintaining a particular amount in this, and what is that amount? How close are we to reaching it? Could we have not, in fact, for some reason, if we decided to take $1 million out this year and reduce the budget by another percentage point? Would that have been a fiscally sound decision to have done, or not, in your view? Thank you.
Certainly, you could make a decision to reduce the unassigned fund balance by whatever the city council decides. So that's your decision to make. The city council has a goal that they adopted several years ago of 18.5%. So that's the target that we, as administration, work to make sure that we remain above that target. There are, the, the rating agencies, when they look at the ratings that we have, and they look at our fund balances, the higher the fund balance is, the better our rating agent, the ratings, and the lower our tax, our interest rates are for the bonds that we sell. The low, in these days, with the higher interest rates on bonds, that has a bigger impact than it did even several years ago. So is it a sound decision? You know, I guess I would say, if you, if you lower it too much, the rating agencies are going to take note of that, then that puts our rating in jeopardy of a downgrade or a watch. If that happens, then we could be paying a higher interest rate. So there could be an offset between the interest rate that we're paying. If we have a heavy budget year on selling bonds, you know, that could have a bigger impact than the dollars that you actually took out of fund balance to lower the tax rate.
Thank you, Your Honor. The mayor touched on this a little bit, but I just, I wanted to follow up on it. You know, I'm often asked why we don't essentially give a rebate to the taxpayers. We've got all this money sitting on the sidelines. And I think one, one point that we really need to emphasize is, and I hate to put you on the spark, but if our bond rating went down by, down to a double, down to an A or something, I mean, what, what would that mean? Of all the dollars out there bonded, what would that dollar amount be to the taxpayer if, if we didn't have a superior bond rating?
You know, when you look at the, the rating that we have at a AA+ now, if it goes down to an A, you know, we could be paying, and I'm just guessing here, but we could be paying a half to a percentage more on our bonds, you know, depending on what else is going on in the community. But, you know, if you look at that 1%, you know, what does that mean? So every million dollars, that 1%, you know, becomes, you know, X amount of dollars. You know, if you look at the heavy bond years that we have, that we're looking at in the next couple of years, that obviously becomes a much bigger dollar amount. So this would be a more complicated time to try to reduce that unassigned fund balance too much, because the rating agencies, if they look at it and say, hey, you're reducing that a lot, you know, we think that that lessens your flexibility or your ability to be able to manage the operations of the city more, that's a higher risk for them, it's going to charge a higher interest rate. That's really what it boils down to.
Right. So, yeah, I just, so my point, I guess, is...
Follow-up.
Follow-up, thank you. My point really is that while it looks like we're sitting on cash, we're really saving the taxpayers a lot of money and potentially increased bond rates.
And there's always a, there's always a balance in there, but you want to, you know, the stronger that we are as a community financially, and many other factors that they use when they do the bond rating, the better off, the better off the community is. And so I just, I always want to make sure that we say, and I think the manager mentioned it several times in his presentations, you know, anytime that we decrease that fund balance level, you know, we always risk, the, the risk is that we have a lower bond rating, because that is one of the key components of it.
Thank you. Counsel Kretovic.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a question for you, Mr. City Manager. I mean, everybody at the table knows I live by rumor and exaggeration. This is a rumor I heard about, a presentation that you did recently with members of the business community for the chamber, that said if we wanted to have a 0% tax rate, you're going to dispel this rumor or confirm, if we wanted to have a 0% tax rate increase for this year, we would need to have over $100 million in real growth.
$100 million in real growth? Honestly, I don't think that would get you...
So it's a rumor.
I don't know if it gets the...
Yeah, I don't think it would get you.
I don't think it quite gets us there.
That, and that's about a million.
Oh, it's not enough.
It's not enough?
Oh, it's not enough?
Oh, you're not close.
It's not...
Probably need 200 million.
Okay, rumor dispelled and exaggeration over. Thank you, sir.
There's a reason economic development is a focus of this administration. Counsel Brown?
Thank you. I just want to confirm now that Mr. LeBrun is here at the table. With this decrease to tax rate of $9.84, we're looking at, on a $350,000 house, $115.50 of an increase. For the city-only portion, I know the school portion is 56.5% of our tax bill, so...
It's just about, I didn't calculate that number, Counselor, but it's just about that number.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counsel Kretovic.
Just to follow up on the conversation about unassigned fund balance and drawing on it carefully, is it safe to assume that over the course of the coming year, after this budget, budget is adopted, there may be instances where you, City Manager, come to counsel with a need that has arisen, and we would again be drawing on the unassigned fund balance potentially, as we did with human services needs this year?
I'll give you a good example.
Thank you.
The dollars for the PFAS gear for the fire department, was that important or not? I think so.
Yes.
I think the fire department will tell you it thinks so, but if you didn't have the dollars in there to do that, you'd have to say, sorry, thank you, I'm going to bond that. Not only am I going to bond that, I'm going to pay interest and, and principal on that for 10 years, 20 years, probably at least 10, because it's going to be 10.
I wouldn't say 20.
10 years, so, I tried to do 20, but Brian would tell me 10. So not only would you be paying the $305,000 at that cost, you'd be paying interest on that for 10 years.
Thank you.
It gives you the flexibility to do this. And remember, when, when, I'll give you another quick example, when, because of our trash contract and the way that you've managed that over time and the finances, you remember almost every community in this region stopped their recycling program, right? And now even have, can't even get it started back up, for most of them, you didn't. And what that did is actually save you dollars, because that was being sent off to another place, instead of paying $70 a ton, you were paying $0 a ton. So not only was it a good financial decision, it's things like that, it gives you the flexibility. So when I look at, even, it was hard for me to do the $561,000, because that just means, and Brian and I talked about this, that just means we got a $561,000 hole in fiscal year '26. You have to, you need to be thinking about fiscal year '26 and '27. So if you make that 561 any bigger, you got that much bigger hole that you, that this group will be sitting around trying to fill next year. So that means, so let's say you double that. That means instead of going into next year with an additional 1% increase, you're going to have 2% increase on top of everything else that's going on. Contracts, wage, in terms of compensation, energy, health benefits. So why, and if you want to do, keep up with your paving program, why do you want to put yourself in that hole, if you don't have to?
Thank you. Can you tell me a follow-up?
Follow-up?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, may I follow up?
You may.
So in terms of trying to understand this, as someone who does not have a finance background, and using an analogy of being a homeowner, so I might make my budget for my house for the year, and I might really want to improve something in my home, but I am aware that my furnace could die in December, and then I would need to replace that. So there's like a recommendation, I think, of like homeowners should have like six months of living expenses, right? That's what this unassigned fund balance is for the city. These are our rainy day funds, but not in the sense of like, when we do something really fun, but when we are presented with an actual need in the course of the coming year, which we will be, because we historically have been, to varying degrees, such as the pandemic, we will have the means to make those decisions. Is that accurate?
That's correct, without having to come back and do a supplemental appropriation, that would then therefore increase taxes. Because you do appropriation out of this reserve, not out of, out of additional dollars coming in from the taxpayer in the future.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience in helping me make sure I really understand it.
And those opportunities could be anything from, how are we going to fix a skate house over at White Park? With cash? Use cash instead of bonding, that type of thing. I mean, this goes on. How are we going to keep plow drivers so we can get snow removed? You use this fund to do those. So you never know what's kind of going to come up, what other opportunities could come your way.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Counsel Foot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo some of the other comments that I heard about the responsible budget. I think all of us new councilors here attended a session in January, and I was relieved when the town man, the city manager mentioned the fact that he was very fiscal responsible. And I can't agree more on the budget that the team put together. I do think it is very responsible and respectful. It's more than we all want it to be, but it's the sign of the times, as, as been explained. And I just want to, I just want to echo what everyone else said. I've heard some, some terms here in the last hour about transparency, I love it, economic development. I think we ought to all understand the difference between economic development and economic growth. I'm not interested in economic growth. I want partners, economic people that come into this city and want to contribute to the city in excess of what it's costing us to do business with them. So I think that we should all be very clear and understand the difference between the two. And I, I'm like, I do, encouraged by what I'm hearing about economic development and transparency. Great job, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments or questions? Counsel Brown?
Your Honor, I have some things that I'd like to bring up, but I'm wondering if we should vote on yours first.
As soon as the question stopped, that was my intention. Are we all set? Are we ready to put this to a vote? The motion, the vote is on the motion before us, the motion that was made by Counselor Todd, seconded by Counselor Kretovic, to basically approve the amendments that I have proposed to the mayor, to the city manager's proposed budget. Are we clear on the question? So if you're in favor of them, you would vote aye. If you're opposed, you would vote no. This will be a roll call vote, starting with me. I vote yes. Counsel Fantasy?
Yes.
Counsel Foot?
Aye.
Counsel Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counsel Horn?
Yes.
Counsel Keach?
Yes.
Counsel Kretovic?
Yes.
Counsel Kurtz?
Yes.
Counsel McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel McNamara?
Yes.
Counsel Schlosser?
Yes.
Counsel Schultz?
Yes.
Counsel Todd?
Yes.
And Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes. Are there other amendments to the proposed budget? Counsel Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, I was looking at, through some of the, the different CIPs and comparing with last year, and I have been hearing from a lot of people. I heard from folks on fixed income. One woman shared with me that she receives 100, or she receives $1,700 monthly...
$1,700 monthly, 700 of that goes to taxes. So I really feel 41% of her income is going to us. We need to be responsible. And I was just looking at what we could do. And I have, there are four CIP items that I looked at, not eliminating, but pushing out. And I'd like to give you the reasons why. The first one is CIP 65. It's on page 312. And this is all from the May 23 Capital Improvement Project. For the, I'm looking at the $250,000 for the campus master plan. And I would like to push that out because we are doing a master plan for the city in 2026, or that is proposed. So I think it would make sense to fold that into that master plan.
Counselor, do you want to take these individually?
Um, I'll, can I, I'll just run through all of them and then.
All right, go ahead.
Yes, so I'll go through. So then the second one I was looking at was CIP number 91, which is on page 351. And that is a sewer main rehabilitation for 16.9 million. And the reason I brought this up is I had asked, I had used the yellow sheet to ask about last year's design. Last year's budget included 1.9 million for the design of a height sewer study improvement per 2023 right peer study. Staff had said that the right peer study was in draft form and that the, the design did not exist. It was not done. So because of that, I'm wondering if we can't just push that out one year, until the design is done. The design is done, and then we can look back at that. And also, in last year's budget, it wasn't 16.9 million for construction all at once. It was broken up into Phase 1 and Phase 2, with Phase 1 being 8.5 million in 2025 for construction, and Phase 2, 9.4 for construction in 2026. But it was kind of lumped together, 16.9 million all at once. So I'd like to push it out, or reduce it to the original layout that it was last year, 8.5 million for next year's construction when the design is done. The third CIP item I'm looking at is the parking lot. It's page 361. Mr. Schweiger brought up a good point. That is for the 900,000 Beaver Meadow Golf Course parking lot. We are looking at, there are, we're, there were three options: renovate, addition, and rebuild. So I think it makes sense, because we were looking at, with the rebuild, adding buses. And I'm not sure what an addition, where an addition would go, and how that would change things. So I'm saying let's just push that out one year until we know what that design looks like. The fourth item is CIP 372, and that is on page 419. That's for 180,000. And now this item has been in the budget since 2014. And it has actually been the same amount of money since 2014. It was like 1.2 million. But in the last few years, it's been modified to include design and land acquisition. And it stated that this is Phase 3 of the water master plan. So I went back and looked at the water master plan, and there is no Phase 3. There's only a Phase 2. And in that master plan, it shows roads that don't exist. So I think that this is outdated. And as we're looking at a future master plan, let's update everything. So I'd like to just push that out one year. Those are my suggestions.
Do you want to make that as one motion, all of those?
Uh, yes. Um, maybe let's break it into, let's break it up into each, if that's the.
All right. Do you want to make a motion?
Pleasure of the, of the council.
Do you want to make a motion on CIP 65?
Yes, I make a motion on CIP 65 that we push CIP 65 out one year, because it feels like it's a duplication of what we're doing in 2026.
All right.
Can I ask the page number again, sir?
Sure.
I apologize.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
All right. Counselor Fantasy, seconds.
427.
Thank you.
Discussion?
Are we looking in the by category?
I think I need a couple of minutes to digest this.
Yeah, me too. I just look at that.
I tried to write as quick as, sorry.
That's, that's all right, Counselor.
Yeah. He said the first one is 427?
First one was 312.
312.
Page 312, CIP 65.
311 and 312.
Yeah, I'm, Mr. Beer, I'm going to, can you, I love my dumb questions now.
I love them too.
Which place do we look for this? Because I'm poking around and I'm not.
523.
Thank you.
There you go.
And then which?
Are you in the CIP detail?
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Kurtz.
Are we in the CIP detail?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And so then, okay. And the first page that we're looking for is page?
312.
312.
Thank you.
311, 312, 312.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a proposal that?
Counselor Fantasy.
Thank you. I would propose that we take a five-minute recess so all the councilors have the opportunity to review this proposal since we haven't had the benefit of looking at something.
Well, I would prefer that everybody take a look at all the proposals because I don't want to take a five-minute break after each of these.
I just forgot which you were looking for again. I guess I'm.
But I will, I will declare a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
312 on this, on the capital improvement project detail?
65?
Yeah, 65.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to move CIP 65 from fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '26. Is there discussion?
Please correct me if this is not allowable, but may I ask the city manager why this is in the CIP this year?
Sure.
City, city manager?
Certainly. If you do go forward with the, the other project that's in relationship to this, which is the design of the new police station, then, then in the following year, there's a request, if it happens that fast, a request to go into construction for a new police station, how are you going to reuse that space? The, right now, all, as you, anybody who's been in City Hall realizes, all the departments are on top of themselves. We have properties that are leased right now. We'd like to bring those folks home to one of our buildings, get out of those leases and save some money. But at the same time, the, for example, there's a domino effect here. You recall, if you look at last year's budget, I had put in money this year to buy property for the library expansion. So, and, but pushed that off back a year, because I thought a City Hall master plan campus study would look at that at the same time. So if you're putting this off, then, then we're not going to be doing anything. So if anybody's interested in libraries, we won't be, you know, that's something you're going to have to push off also at the same time. So that, that's how they were tied together. So I could save that money instead of, because why, because you may not need to buy. Why buy property if you don't need to buy it? But let's just look at the whole campus. When I'm thinking campus, it's a library, it's the armory, it's this building, and it's that building, and it's City Hall. How are you going to reuse all of that property and, and hopefully save some dollars and bring people back to campus?
Thank you very much for that clarification.
Counselor Fantasy.
Thank you. So I guess what I would say, based on what the city manager has identified, I certainly don't think it makes any sense not to do this. If we are going to be looking at spending money to build a new police station, I think it makes a lot of sense for us to have money budgeted for us to look at what our campus is going to look like in the future. And if you care about, you know, the library and our other basketball court, which is used quite a bit, and some of our other city property, I think it makes a lot of sense to be doing those proj, to be planning those projects now rather than pushing that off another year or two. So, while I seconded the motion, I did so because I think it's important for everybody to understand why we're looking to do that now and why we shouldn't be pushing that off.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Schultz.
Yeah. So if I understand the motion correctly, it would be to, for item number 65 to push back the 2025 items one year, or all of the program, the domino, the whole domino plan back one year, like in its entirety?
I, if I understand the city manager correctly, Counselor, I believe what he's saying is that there would be something of a domino effect in terms of, of other projects. Yeah.
For clarification, Mr. Mayor? Follow up, yeah.
So the, I guess what I really need then is the clarification on what the motion is we're voting on. Is it just relevant to 2025? Like, I think the motion was raised?
It is basically to take CIP 65, which in the manager's proposed budget, it takes place in fiscal year '25, and to push that back in the CIP, the, the CIP budget or projection to fiscal 2026. So we'd be talking about it next year at this time when we look at the fiscal 2026 budget.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? Counselor Kurtz.
Point of clarification, when I look at the CIP 65, I see the total is $375,000. But we're only, we only in our discussion seem to be talking about the $250,000 for the City Hall campus plan and needs assessment. Are we also talking about bumping the masonry work for $75,000 and the fire alarm upgrades for $50,000? I'm just clarifying because of the discussion we've been having.
I didn't, I didn't take it that way. That was just specifically for the.
So we're talking about the part of CIP 65 that is $250,000. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Brown?
Thank you. I just, I didn't realize that it was, I was seeing it as City Hall. But, Mr. City Manager, can you explain, is this, and tying in Counselor Fantasy's comments, is this connected to the 2026 master plan? Is this feeding into that? Is this a part of that?
I think, I think it's something where you have, when you do the 2026 master plan, you're not going to have a finished product until, how many years, Matt?
Two years.
Two years? You hustle two years, 2028. So in my mind, this is something separate from that, because I think you, we know roughly, because if you think about the use, uses and demand, we can pretty much predict whether, how much growth is going to go on in this community. And we've been, unlike other governmental agencies, we'll just leave it at that, that are going, that are shrinking, we're growing, and we're going to continue to grow. And so we're looking at things like, how can we improve parking for the library? How can we improve handicap cap parking for folks here? How can we, you know, I've been holding off redoing the handicap ramp at City Hall and the lighting and everything associated with that. For handicap folks, they got to come into the, into, they got to park in the back of the City Hall, in reality, come maneuver way around, go into the basement, then come up. Is that necessary? I don't think so. But that's the way it was designed 30, 40, 50 years ago. But again, so I'm trying to, I think it's a whole series of things. City Council chambers, we talked about having something much more updated. This is the opportunity to really look at that as part of, you know, space planning. And I'll tell you something, when I came here 25 years ago as the first Community Development Director, the, the Community Development Report that was put together by City Council said, you know, the best thing you can do, one-stop shopping for community development, put everybody in the same space. And then when they finally got around to do it in 1998, they realized they had to put code here. And I've got Community Development Office, thank God, Matt, you know, can manage all this stuff, scattered throughout all kinds of different floors. So, and then some of the stuff they have to go over to the fire department for. That's not one-stop shopping. But this is the opportunity to actually kind of make that happen and do, you know, put, put those pieces together. We just don't have the space to do that.
Follow up?
Follow.
Just clarification, the armory is the Green Street Community Center.
Community Center, right. And up there is IT. And, right, remember, we used to have Petit Papillon was up there. We were renting the space for a dance academy, and they were up there. Now we've run out of that space, and I've had to turn that into IT space. And they're all on different floors. And I can imagine if you wanted to have, if you had somebody who had maybe mobility issues who worked in the IT department, well, they couldn't get up to the major IT offices anymore. So, things like that.
And let me, let me just comment that the city manager and I have talked about the fact that one of my dreams is when the police station project is completed and we look at the entire campus and we look at this chamber, this chamber will be fully accessible. That there will not have to be a microphone handed to somebody who can't come up to testify at this table. That'll never happen again. That's one of my dreams. I may be dead by the time we get there. We'll see. Any other comments before we put this to a vote? Counselor Foote.
Thank you, Your Honor. I hear the word campus. I do like that term. I think we also need to be mindful of what's happening in other communities and what's happened on when the, when people vote in other communities, as far as public safety in particular. on when the, when people vote in other communities. As far as public safety in particular, I, the location of the police station today, the people who were before us that placed that there at that location, I think they were way ahead of their time. When you consider the, the needs today between the schools, the hospitals, in the, where the people are, there's a one-minute difference to respond from the police station up to the high school versus where we and I voted to purchase. I think we have to be mindful of all of these items in society where we, we have obligations to the schools and to the hospitals and to these different institutions. And, and I think the location of the police station is excellent. I can tell you that in other communities in the state, in Bedford, they voted to, voted down handily to move the police station to a remote location. I think Merrimack and maybe London area had some capital improvement projects were voted down. In Salem, on the other hand, they actually decided to move the police station to a remote location temporarily and rebuild in their present location and then move back. So, we're here in this, this study. I think we should really be focused and keep an open mind on what's best for the community. Maybe we need to purchase another piece of property locally here to keep this campus mentality going. And I'm hoping that when we go through that process, you know, we're thinking outside the box, as we often say, to, to make sure that we're being considerate of all the community members. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any other comments before we put it to a vote? Counselor Brown?
I'm going to revoke my motion.
Withdraw your motion?
Withdraw my motion after additional information. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Is your second withdrawn?
I have it withdrawn.
All right. Motion is withdrawn. Counselor Brown, do you have another motion to make?
Yes, I would like to make a motion regarding CIP 91, which is the sewer main rehabilitation and construction. Per the yellow sheet that I submitted to staff and their response that the design does not exist, the right here study is in draft form. Last year, it listed construction in two phases rather than the full 16.9 million. I'd like to push this out one year. And when we push it out to break it back into those two phases, 8.55 million for 2026 and 9.4 million for 2027.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Counselor Horn, seconds. Discussion. Counselor Kretovic.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll not be supporting this motion. As I understood it, and I could totally be wrong, we need to do this sewer project so that we can experience real growth in a specific area of the city. And I just heard the city manager tell me $100 million in real growth isn't enough. If we expect to expand our tax base, that means we have to have growth. If I've got that wrong, someone correct me.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Brown?
Yes, if I may respond to Counselor Kretovic. I absolutely support growth. However, I don't believe that we need to earmark 16.9 million right out the gate. I think let's look at the design, let's be conservative, and let's see what the projections are. I don't think there's anything wrong with going back to what we approved in last year's budgets. The design should be completed this year, and then we can move forward with that information.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Fantasy?
Thank you. I will not be supporting the motion. I think this is an example of where we need to maintain and improve infrastructure that we have in place. And if we are going to support development in Ward Eight and Ward Nine, I know the Ward Eight counselor's not here, but I'm sure he would be disappointed if we weren't supporting just basic infrastructure project that we need to do to, we've, as we heard, we've got plenty of capacity, but the issue is we do not have the crossing that we need at a sufficient capacity to get this stuff to our treatment plan down on Hall Street. So, I think it makes sense to make that investment now. If we make the appropriations now, we can bond for the whole amount. We don't have to use it all, great. But in my experience professionally, almost every construction number that you get today is going to be more expensive tomorrow. So I think it's incumbent upon us to do that work and appropriate the dollars today.
Thank you, Counselor Fantasy, Counselor Foot, and then Counselor Schultz.
I'm glad you mentioned, may I?
Go ahead.
Somewhat confused on the project now, because I thought it was a project to increase the capacity of the conduit system, the piping system that went from the mall down to the river. Now I'm hearing it's to get across the river. I guess I need some clarifications myself at this point.
Sure. Mr. City Manager?
It is to get, it's, there's several pieces to it, but it's really to get the water. It's get the, I think it was just, what I heard was getting, getting material, so to speak, across the river. But to get them, get them to the river, to get them across, we have to improve the pipes on the way. So, the way you understood it in the first place is the correct way.
Thank you.
So, so the focus is really in the, from the mall area, if I remember correctly, going from the mall, sorry.
Certainly. Follow up, sorry.
So the purpose of this is to get the effluent from the mall down Loudon Road to Turnpike Road to Pembroke Road and down Gully Hill, I'll say, to get to the river. Do I understand that correctly? That's the crux of it?
Right. So, what we've looked at doing is, you recall, we asked you to switch the road program and do some more roads up in Ward 10, and then, just by chance, and now, you know, and, and actually to hold off on doing Pembroke Road and doing a sidewalk on Pembroke Road, and then after we get this project done, we'll go back to the, and the reason we're doing that, because just those roads you talked about is exactly what we're doing. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Schultz?
I'll wave off, thank you.
Wave off. Counselor Horn?
Can you address, was it previously two different years of CIP and why would it be joined for this year?
Mr. City Manager?
So it was two different years, and in reality, if you're gonna, Counselor Foot can back me up, in reality, when you sign the project to get the work done, you need to have all the money to be able to do the work. And that's what, that's what our plan is. Put them together, get the work done. In reality, you only bond what you need to bond. So, we'll look at the interest rate, what's going on. If we're at the point where we don't need all the dollars at once, $16 million at once, and we only need to bond $8 million come around January, then when Brian goes out to do the bond, that's what we'll bond and hold off on bonding the rest of it. Unless it looks like interest rates are going up. Now, if interest rates are going down, that behooves you to wait a little bit. We can, because we'll borrow at a cheaper price as you go along. But we'll only borrow what we need. Take a look at, okay, how much money are we going to need this coming year and bond those dollars and have that money available at the time to do it. So, this just gives us the flexibility to make sure we're paying the least amount of interest as possible, but allows us to enter into a contract with people to get the whole project done.
Counselor Keach?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll be voting against this, and I would urge fellow counselors to, to do as, as well. I think it's really short-sighted to hamstring the administration by, you know, limiting what they can do. I think giving them the maximum dollars gives them the most flexibility, and I think it's just a good long-term plan for inevitably what the growth that's going to occur in the Heights.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Kurtz?
Yes, I have a question about the timing of the study, which Counselor Brown referenced. So, that it's, this references, the CIP references a 2023 Wright Pierce study. So we have that study that tells us the improvements we need to make?
We have a drafted study which tells the improvements we need to make. So we're trying to move, what I'm trying to avoid is based on where we are with all the, all the amount of growth that is going on now, particularly related to housing. If this was strictly commercial, we'd be in a different situation. And to follow up on what Counselor Foot said, you know, economic growth is something, you know, economic development is something you do for yourself. Economic growth is what somebody does to you. So if you keep that in mind, that's, that's, that's our approach to these things. What we're trying, I'd like to get to the point where I can say to Matt and the planning board, you can keep approving housing projects in this city. If you vote down this project, then I will say tonight, before Matt leaves, tell the planning board, all the projects that you've approved in the city, in that area of the Heights, you know, fine, that we have enough capacity for them. Don't approve any more projects. Don't approve any more housing. Don't approve, don't approve, approve the redevelopment of the Steeplegate Mall. Well, Costco and, Costco and the other, and Whole Foods, that's okay, because they're not going to generate a lot of, and everybody wants to. And that, and that's only going to generate a little bit of waste. But you talk about the housing elements that go with that, there's no way our system can handle that and get that safely to the Hall Street treatment plan. So, that's, that's why this project is where it is in the budget and why it's important to move on it.
Follow up?
Yes, follow up. So, the draft study obviously will become a final completed study before anything is done. And the number here, the 16.9 million?
We'll, we'll take that.
What, what might, from a draft to a final, what might occur?
What could happen?
Yeah.
We'll go to bid, and we'll see, and we'll see what type of bids we get on this. You know, it wouldn't be unusual to have us, based on the current growth going on, say materials are up, we have to come back, you might need additional money, or, or, hey, there's another way to do this. There's various ways to skin this, right? And this, taking a look at doing some sort of field analysis, we can reduce costs based, and that's, that's what we do with every project. So, based on, and that's all this is, is a plan based on what we think, based on the preliminary design and the work that we're doing of how much this is going to cost. We could be off by a million dollars either way. No, no question.
Thank you.
Counselor Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will say, I'm leaning, I haven't decided yet, I'm leaning to vote against it, and just a couple of quick points that leads to a question. So I appreciate that you mentioned, Mr. Town Manager, City Manager, that, that, you know, it'd be nice if we knew how the interest rates were going to go. And also the acknowledgement that, you know, like a Whole Foods restroom situation is very different than the second phase of that development at the mall property, which are the housing, and that's going to be a bigger burden. Is there a possibility, obviously not having the prognostication on the interest rate, since the burden is really in Phase Two? Two questions. Could that then be reasonably delayed by some period of time, knowing that the burden really isn't until then? And then the second question I have, and, and, you know, I think this is still a question of why some of us that are new and are learning how this works, but to what degree do these sort of bond measures, how does that impact, like, say we were to defer it a year, does it have any impact at all on the tax rate? Because I would assume that it's separate in some way.
It has no impact on the tax rate.
Okay, so it's two separate animals.
So by, so by moving that you don't do anything to the tax rate, and it moves it back, moves, obviously would move the project back. I, in my mind, if you want to have this, if you think about the way development works, you need to get these, we need to be out in front of this to get these in place. Otherwise, the developers are going to say, okay, you know, the approvals, anything the planning board could do for any development, anywhere along the line, after anything's already been approved, would be conditional approvals based on this project being in place and operational. So, so up until that point, anything coming along very shortly, if we don't, if we don't have some good movement on this, we're going to have to put conditional approvals on all this approval. As soon as you start doing conditional approvals on things, you're adding uncertainties into a developer, and generally that triggers, and Counselor Fantasy can tell you this, that will trigger questions with the financiers on whether or not they're going to actually fund a project and make something happen. And as soon as people get antsy on things like that, then, then projects start to go away, and things don't happen, and they'll take those dollars and they'll vest them someplace else other than Concord, so.
Counselor Brown?
Yes. So I understand that this doesn't affect the tax rate, but it does impact the water and sewer increase. And I know that that increased, it increased 4% last year, and we're looking at a 7.75 and 8% increase this year. So my thought, and please correct me, was that if we push these out a year, or until at least we know we have the design. I have not seen, I, the, the Wright Pierce study has not been available to us, so I have not seen it. But my thought was that we might delay that water sewer increase as well, or at least reduce it back to a 4% increase versus an 8% increase.
Counselor, Mr. City Manager?
What happens when you, obviously the quicker you start collecting additional dollars, the more you will alleviate the impacts in future years, right? So you could change the amount, the percentage rate from eight to any number that's less than eight, and that will mean that the future numbers may have to go higher, depending on what the cost of the project is, right? So, that will buy you, you know, what was, what was the impact on a home per year for sewer? Three, Brian, do you remember?
Three dollars and 36 cents.
A month? So what is that a year?
Times 12, 40.
Thank you. So, so you might, so you might, yeah, so you might save some, you know, maybe, you know, 12 bucks or 13, 14, 14 bucks over a year this year. It just means you'll have that much more the following year, which is, it's a decision, it's a policy decision by the council.
Follow up?
Yes, thank you. Would it also buy us a little time if we wanted to levy impact fees for water and sewer on these additional projects? I know that I've spoken with Lebanon City Council, and they have levied, they went back to impact fees because they needed it, and they needed it for specific projects. And I'm just looking at the major projects that are not in our budget, that are on the horizon, and looking at, you know, hearing those folks who have a fixed income, how can we alleviate that burden in some way?
So there's, may I?
Yes.
So, the impact, instead of limiting it to impact fees, you could talk impact fees, you can talk betterment districts based on who's actually receiving the benefits. You could talk tax increments financing districts. So, for example, I'll just hypothetically, if you were to do a, something over the Steeplegate Mall in that area, that general area, could you create a tax income and financing district that then generates dollars that you can use to not only pay for any type of general fund capital improvements to support that area, but could you use it to also offset revenues in the Water and Wastewater Fund? Yes. So, so I wouldn't limit yourself to impact fees, but, but delaying the project doesn't give you any more time to do that one way or the other. You can do that anyways. And I would think as you talk to, particularly, let's use the Steeplegate Mall as an example, if you talk to the Onyx Group when you're talking about that project, why not talk about different ways to finance these, these infrastructure improvements? But, but all these improvements, I think, as one of the councils mentioned, doesn't just help the Steeplegate Mall. This helps everybody on that whole side of the river, and anybody who has property, and anybody who has any dreams of adding to their home or anything like that. When I talk about, you know, putting, putting a stop on things, it's putting a stop on everything, that, anything that could generate sewer, because you're just not going to have the capacity to do that. So, I don't know if you need the time to delay it a whole year to come up with a system if you want to bring alternative financing into, into place.
Counselor Fantasy?
Thank you. One of the things that I heard a lot about this fall is how we need to do what we can, and we don't have a lot of levers to help increase the housing supply. Now, increasing the housing supply is not just new builds, but it's also increasing density, allowing people to make better use of the property that they have. What I'm hearing from the city managers essentially, if we don't support this project, Ward Eight and Ward Nine, good luck. You're not going to be able to do anything else at your property, you're not going to be able to do any more, any more builds besides what's already in the pipeline, no pun intended. So, from my perspective, this is one of the few areas where we actually can make an impact with respect to housing. This is, I would say, our duty to really support and fund the infrastructure that allows housing developments to take place. We've seen a lot of projects, at least proposed on that side of the river, that are either in process or might be in the future. If we want to see an increase in housing supply, then I think we need to support this.
Thank you, counselor. Any other comments? I'm going to put this to a vote. I will be voting against this motion. I think that our water and sewer infrastructure is vital and critical. There's been some excellent points made around this table relative to the need for this particular piece of infrastructure for significant housing development, which is critical, and also for economic development in the Heights area. I'm also cognizant of the fact that we really need to stay ahead of our infrastructure needs, particularly in terms of water and sewer. I think about the fact that every year, and this is, I'm going to be talking about water rather than sewer in these cases, but every year when we vacation in Mississippi with my wife's family, we read about Jackson, where people are drinking bottled water because they deferred work on their infrastructure too long, and now their water is not potable. I also note that the city of Atlanta is in the middle of a crisis right now because of failed infrastructure. And we've had small failures of infrastructure in this city in the past. So, I'm very serious about keeping ahead of these needs. So, I'm very serious about keeping ahead of these needs, or keeping abreast of these needs, to ensure that we have safe, safe drinking water, and that when we flush the toilet, it goes someplace other than in our basement. So, I, again, will be voting against this motion. So, roll call vote, the mayor votes no. Council Finance.
No.
Council Foot.
So, the discussion's been ended?
Yes. I'm sorry, I asked if anybody had any other comments, Councilor.
I'll vote yes.
Okay.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me. I'll vote no.
Okay, thank you. Council Grady Sexton.
No.
Council Horn.
No.
Council Keach.
No.
Council Kretovic.
No.
Council Kurtz.
No.
Council McLaughlin.
No.
Council McNamara.
No.
Councilor Schlosser.
No.
Council Schultz.
No.
Council Todd.
No.
Council Brown.
I'll vote against it. I guess I could, or could I, is it, it's too late to withdraw?
Yes, it's too late to withdraw. So, you're gonna vote no on your motion?
I, I guess so.
All right.
It was a good discussion.
It was a good discussion, it was robust. Thank you. Uh, Councilor, do you wanna make?
Yes, my third item, thank you, Your Honor. CIP 107, parking lot, page three sixty-one, for nine hundred thousand. Mr. Schweiger brought an excellent point, that the parking lots would be done before we had a design or decision even on the, either renovation, addition, or rebuild for Beaver Meadow. So, I would simply like to, it doesn't even have to be put off for a year, I'm just thinking we wait until we receive that information. I guess, yeah, it would be a year. So, push it out one year.
Push it out one year. So, the motion is to take CIP 107 and move it from fiscal year twenty-five back to fiscal year twenty-six, correct?
Correct.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
I heard Council Horn first. Discussion. Council Grady Sexton.
Thank you, Your Honor. It sounds like the last two motions from Council Brown, may, there may have been some confusion, and so I'm just wondering if we could go straight to the city manager to provide any information that we might need prior to voting on this item.
Thank you, Councilor. Would you care to provide any information?
No, sure. Of course. So, if you look at this, if you, if you think about the way the, the budget works, if I, you'd be, the dollars would be available July, right? So, before you do, you could do any type of parking lot expansion or replacement, you gotta design, I think. The biggest problem if you go out there is the drainage issues, and the, and the pipes that are collapsing underneath, you can see them, you could feel them when you're, when you're walking on it. So, we need to come up with a design, then obviously need to work with our consultants on that. You would then get to the point where you have to put out the bid. More than likely, you're probably gonna be doing, you know, and you don't wanna do anything during golf season itself, so you'd be doing something after the, the season's completed, and then we play golf, right? We, people, peoples play golf right up until Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving Day. Mile Standish, right? I got that.
Yes, sir.
I paid attention. And then, and then, of course, then you have over the winter, so there's a, there's a brief window there, end of November to December, where the paving plants are open, where you can actually get something done. Or you'd start in the spring, and you wanna start early enough in the spring, because you don't wanna start interfering with golf season, because everybody's been waiting since, since St. Patrick's Day to be able to get out, get out there and golf. So, but more than likely, I'm thinking that you're probably gonna be, could you squeeze something in the end of November, early December? Yes. Or could you squeeze something in March, April, in there? Yes. I would like to be back before you with a plan, so, Mr. Schweiger isn't, is not right, as I'll leave it alone, is that the plan all along is to have something back in front of you, so that you could look at the clubhouse, if you want, if you decide you want to do that or not, and say, okay, this is how this is gonna work, this is how the parking lot's going to work, would have a design, we can start the design on that, you'd have them both, do they work together? And you may decide, we're not gonna do the clubhouse, but hey, the parking lot still needs to get done, we go out and do the parking lot, because the money's appropriated to do that. So, that's been the plan all along, is that you be able to look at what could happen with, with the clubhouse, whether it's new, nothing, with something with an addition, and match it up with the golf course, with the, with the parking lot design.
Council Finance.
Thank you. Would it be fair to say, Mr. Manager, that regardless of whether or not we do the, something with the clubhouse, we've gotta do something with the parking lot?
That's why it's here, that's correct.
Okay.
And I, if I could, sorry. If I could add an addition to that, in something like this, a project like this, particularly with the drainage issues it has, you're very, very likely, and I'll leave it to the consultants to tell us the best approach, you're gonna do a base, you're gonna do a base course, you're gonna do the drainage, you're gonna do the base course, you're gonna let it sit for a little bit. You're gonna wanna make sure that there's no settling, you're gonna make sure everything's placed, then you're gonna come back, and you're going to do the finish course down the line, so in case there is some sort of impact with the clubhouse or anything like that. Perfect example is Bog Road. You did, we did Bog Road a few years ago, remember the free dollars we got from the state? We took all that, nine hundred thousand dollars, and I had dreams of grandeur, and that was gone on, it was gone on Bog Road in one swipe. And we took care of Bog Road, but it's only this year we're actually going out and putting the finish course on it. So, it's the same type of approach. That way, you make sure you have a, a longer life to the pavement to begin with, and it's done correctly when you do it. That's my soliloquy.
That's your soliloquy, thank you. I think we're gonna name, rename Bog Road S. Bell Drive. Any other, any other discussion?
You got it done.
Any other discussion? Going once, going twice? All right, I'm gonna put this to the vote. The mayor is going to be voting no on this. The mayor votes no. Council Finance.
No.
Council Foot.
Nay.
Council Grady Sexton.
No.
Council Horn.
Yes.
Council Keach.
No.
Council Kretovic.
No.
Council Kurtz.
No.
Council McLaughlin.
No.
Council McNamara.
No.
Council Schlosser.
No.
Council Schultz. Council Todd.
No.
Council Brown.
Yes.
The motion fails. Uh, Council Brown?
Yes, I have one more.
Okay.
Thank you for the discussion. CIP, item three seventy-two, it's on page four one nine. It is the, let's see exactly what it's called, the Pump Station. And I'll just explain that this has been in the budget since 2014.
Councilor, would you make your motion first?
Oh, yes, I make a motion that this item be pushed out one year, the hundred and eighty thousand, and the, be pushed out one year, and the following construction be, pushed out a year beyond that.
So, the project be pushed back to fiscal twenty-six, fiscal twenty-seven?
Yes, thank you.
All right, any second.
For discussion purposes.
All right, Council Foot, seconds. Council Brown, speak to your motion.
Thank you. Yes, so I noticed that this has been in the budget since 2014, that was the, you know, the elect, the, the earliest electronic budget that I could find, and it has been, it has had the same language, per Phase Three, Water Master Plan, but when I went back to look at the master plan, it only goes to Phase Two, and it also shows roads that don't exist. So, I felt like this might be outdated. And actually, the amount was listed for the same, so this may be something that we don't need to include. And if we don't include this, I don't know if this could also impact, or lower potentially water, water rates, yes, as well.
Thank you. Council Grady Sexton.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm wondering if Mr. Manager would be willing to speak to any potential unintended consequences?
So, the reason, the reason this is in here the way it is, is so you spend the short money, the hundred and eighty thousand dollars upfront to do the design, to see what, what you actually need to build, and of course, well, it's a hundred thousand for the design, eighty thousand for the land acquisition, about where, you know, once we decide if the station, or I should say, when the station, where the station needs to be located. And the reason, if you, the reason it's in here is really to address all the needs of, all the development that's taken place up in that section of East Concord over the years, and the water pressure issues that those folks have. If you decide you wanna push it off a year, or two years, or whatever the case is gonna be, you certainly could. The people who are dealing with the water issues now will continue to deal with them, they've dealt with them for a decade, they'd have to deal with them further. I saw this as, and I don't know if it was 2014 or 13, or it might even go back before the electronic budget, it might be 12, somewhere in there, the first year I put it in there, and I put it far enough out that, boy, you know, that's a long way, that's a long way, and tried to space things out, you tried to space out the costs. Well, here it comes, and the way I look at it is, the folks out here in this, in this whole area, have been waiting a decade for this water improvement to come along, and been very patient about it, and I thought it was time, I thought it was time to get it done. There's no, there's no magic to the year, so if you wanted to move it, you could move it, but again, I've seen myself essentially waiting ten years already to get this done, when it was identified that you, we need to do this, and it, and it needs to happen. So, again, the short money is, this year, is design, of course, land acquisition, we'll talk to you about, and again, the opportunity to, you could always do the design, and do the land acquisition, and then hold off on the actual construction, if you found that you don't need to do the construction. So, that's, and that's, that's the real money, that's the million dollars. So, you could slide that around, you could move it back and forward as you need to, but it makes sense to do the design now and see what or not, what, what actually has to have, happen out there. And again, we're not asking for the dollars to do the construction, it's just, just look at the design and look at, where should it go?
Other discussion?
That's why I broke, and, oh, sorry, that's why I broke it up. So, if I ask you for the whole thing, then, you know, we, we could move that fast with it, I'm saying, let's take our time, let's just do the design now.
Council Kretovic.
Thank you, Your Honor. Oddly enough, this is an item that had been floating in conversation out in the community about why do we need a new pump station? And what I said to this, one of the specific residents who lives in East Concord was, don't you want water pressure? And then it was like, wait, this is gonna fix my water pressure? I'm, I'm gonna be in a really bad place voting to remove this, and I want people in East Side Concord to have water pressure, and people in East Side Concord want water pressure that the rest of the city enjoys, so I will be voting against this move.
Thank you, Council Kretovic. Any other comments, questions? Council Foot.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've actually spent quite a bit of time over the last, last fall, walking Dominique, Hampshire, Profile, and it is understood there is, is a water pressure issue, and there has been for decades, some of those houses are forty, approaching fifty years old. And this, it goes back to where, you know, I'm sure you, you've had enough of me, hearing me talk about impact fees and assessments, but this is a classic example where this particular infrastructure should have been constructed when the houses were constructed on Dominique and Profile, and this is exactly why we need to start collecting those fees, because what's happening is, it's getting, it's getting dispersed, and the, and the resources are being placed on other people. So, I get it, I heard it, and I also heard that people were concerned about the, about the cost of it. So, and I think I know who Council Kretovic is referring to.
Oh, it's the whole family, and it's a whole neighborhood, thank you, sir. But they do live on one of those roads.
So, I'm very cognizant of that, but again, this is, this is, I just wanna make the point about why we need to collect impact fees and assessments for, for different utilities, so we're not transferring the burden to other people. So, I will be voting against it, but I just wanted to make that clear, where I stand as far as what we need to do as a group, we need to be better negotiators. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other, Council Grady Sexton.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm just wondering if Council Brown wants to withdraw her motion, now understanding the impact that this would have on the residents of East Concord, who've been waiting so long to have this issue rectified.
Council Brown.
Thank you for that, but I'm enjoying this discussion, so I absolutely wanna hear from other people. I, I know that, as Council Foot has said, that, you know, those, it's been forty years that people have experienced this, and we have not collected impact fees, so, you know, and I think that that is an important negotiation piece as we go forward, looking at housing, that we do need to have impact fees for these. And Mr. Manager, I really appreciate you stating that the design, we can have the design and hold off on the construction, because we haven't looked at this. There is no Phase Three, and, and as we go into the master plan, we may realize that we wanna develop in a different way, so I appreciate that. So, I, I'm not gonna withdraw, I would like to allow others, if there's additional conversation.
Any other, any other discussion? Council Kurtz.
Is there a Phase Three of a Water Master Plan forthcoming?
Let me ask Mr. Chesley. Thank you. That decaf coffee is more powerful than I thought it was. There are actually three phases to the Water Master Plan. The first phase had to do with source development, that was completed in 2016. The second phase was regarding distribution, sourcing, and where am I gonna get the water? The second phase was done in 2011, that was distribution. And that is where there are shortfalls in the distribution system, including storage. And the third phase is treatment, and that is taking a look at your treatment plans. So, if you think essentially, you start off with the big picture, and you begin to window it down. In 2011, here, my memory's a little bit on the toms, at one point in time, the thought was to put a elevated tank out in the perimeter of the collection, of the distribution system to address the pressure issues that you're talking about. And we came forward with an alternative, and that's the pump station that's, and is currently contemplated in the budget, which is broken into two phases. So, that pump station basically is to replace, at a million dollars, is replaced, at one time was contemplated, an elevated storage tank. My memory isn't very good right now, I can't tell you what the cost of that elevated storage tank was back in the original documents, but I suspect it was much less, much more, excuse me, yes, more, I'm in the confusion, much more than the pump station that we're talking about. So, right now, I think it's important for us to go forward with the design, and more important, to go forward with the land acquisition, to secure the land that we need to build that pump station, to correct the pressure issues that you all have collectively discussed.
Thank you. Follow-up, Councilers.
Follow-up, yes, thank you, Mr. Chesley. So, just to understand this project detail of CIP three seventy-two, it doesn't sound to me like a booster station improvement depends upon a Phase Three of the water plan, if Phase Three has to do with treatment? And this is an issue of, not source, but distribution?
We identified the booster station as an alternative to the pump station back, we did the Phase Two distribution planning work.
Okay, so, the question arose in part about this item, saying, we're proposing an item without Phase Three of a Water Master Plan, but I'm almost wondering if this description of it is just misleading. We know that we have a master, a Water Master Plan Phase Two, that indicates that we do in fact need this booster station, so...
There may be a typographical error in the, in the description.
Okay, thank you for clarifying, because to me then, we're not missing a piece of information about the necessity of this, we in fact have all the information we need about the necessity of this.
Thank you, Council Kurtz.
Thank you very much for clarifying.
Any other questions for Mr. Chesley while he's here? Thank you, Mr. Chesley.
I'm going back to my coffee.
All right.
Restroom's over there.
Any other discussion? Council Brown.
Yes, it has, it, in 2014, the budget listed the booster pump station as one point two million, and it's still listed as one, one million. Well, I guess it would be one point two, when you include the design and land acquisition. So, what are we, what is that in today's dollars?
Is that a question for the city manager?
I, I guess, who would, who would be able to answer that?
Come on, Chip.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry. Bring up a cup of coffee for me, will you?
Restroom's over there.
There is a challenge in, in planning and estimating for water projects, because they do have an extensive planning horizon, and so we make our best estimate at the time, and as we get closer to it, we try to refine it, and purposely, we break the projects apart. As Tom earlier discussed, let's get the design done and make sure that we truly understand how much this puppy's going to cost. So, as, as we, you know, are doing planning five, 10 years out, we do our best guess. We think it's in the neighborhood of, about this. So, you're going to see some fluidity with CIP numbers, especially with water treatment, and especially wastewater treatment, because sometimes you're making projections that are 10 years out, and it's, it's hard candidly to get them right. And every year, as we prepare the CIP, we try to update those CIPs. The standing order in General Services is to go back, and we prepare the CIP, is harden your numbers for the next two or three years, because we think that you're looking at, generally speaking, a two to three-year planning horizon. If you're going to make a change in, in the rate, we want to make sure in our performer, you have the best information possible, should you elect to change the rate, that you, you can see it. So, basically, you know, we're pretty comfortable with the numbers two or three years out in our performer, because we try to harden those numbers as best we can. And having said that, we're not going to bat 1,000, we never bat 1,000. We'll be back at one point in time. As I said, we tried our darndest to get this right, and we missed it. And, you know, that will happen.
Counselor Kretovic.
Thank you, Mr. Chesley. Would it be safe to say that this is simply a placeholder number?
I think it's a placeholder number, and as accurate as we can define it right now is what we know about it.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Chesley? Counselor Kurtz.
Would designing it then allow us to have a better sense of what constructing it would actually cost?
Absolutely. I mean, in parts of design, you deal with, you begin to really identify subsurface conditions. Subsurface conditions can drive a construction cost wildly high real quickly if you've got poor soils, or a high ledge, or whatever, whatever you run into.
Counsel Brown.
Is it safe to say that it is most likely more than 1 million?
No.
Really?
No, it's not safe to say. I will tell you what actually it costs when I go out and bid it, then I'll tell you when it's safe to say.
Okay. Any other questions?
Actually, maybe when we're done, and we're done with all the changeovers. We're not really certain, okay? But if you're asking me if it's safe, no, it's not safe. It's my best estimate right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Chesley while he's here? Once, twice. All right.
I got more coffee.
Next time you bring a cup up for me.
It's not over.
Any other questions or comments? Any more discussion? I'm going to put this to the vote. I vote no. Counselor Fennessy?
No.
Counselor Foote?
Nay.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
No.
Counselor Horn?
No.
Counselor Keach?
No.
Counselor Kretovic?
No.
Counselor Kurtz?
No.
Counselor McLaughlin?
No.
Counselor McNamara?
No.
Counselor Schlosser?
No.
Counselor Schultz?
No.
Counselor Todd?
No.
Counselor Brown?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any other proposed amendments to the budget as, to the budget as presented?
Thank you, Your Honor. I wish I'd thought this through more thoroughly. Concord TV did come, and they did present in public testimony some of the challenges that they're facing, and the City Manager also discussed the change in some of the, the rates by which we take in as a community for providing internet, sorry, public television and cable services in the city. Much like other organizations within the city, their funding is a little bit limited in where their resources are. I have not identified a source. I know that our budget team is going to be presenting final numbers for us. I would like to make a motion to add $20,000 to the budget line item for Concord TV for fiscal year 2025.
Second that. Okay. Motion is made and seconded. Discussion. Counsel Brown.
I would like to make an amendment that that 20,000 come from the Economic Development Reserve, because I do believe that they generate economic development for our community, and that is a good source justification for that.
Is there a second to that? Is there a second?
I will second it for discussion.
Counselor Schlosser, seconds for discussion. Okay, so, the item under discussion now is to provide funding for Concord TV from the Economic Development Reserve Fund. Discussion. Would you like to speak to that, Counsel Brown?
I think what they do is fantastic, but I believe that if we, if that 20,000 comes from the Economic Development Reserve, it does not impact the tax rate for our residents.
Counsel Kurtz.
I have a clarifying question, may I ask, Counselor Brown?
Sure.
Is, are you asking for the $20,000 to come from the Economic Development Reserve Fund, or from the $150,000 Events Fund that we have already said would come from the Economic Development Reserve Fund?
Your Honor, may I?
You may.
Well, thank you. I believe I, I would have it come from the Economic Development Reserve Fund.
Okay, okay. So, so we would be...
No, not the events. I did not say events.
Not the event. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counsel Schlosser, then Counsel Fennessy.
Could I ask respectfully the City Manager, that if we were to approve this recommendation to add $20,000 to Concord TV, do you have a recommendation of the best place to, to fund it from?
If you could give me, if you give me one minute in the corner with Brian, yeah, if I could, you gotta think it, think it through.
Why don't you take a minute in the corner, and I'll take a question from Counsel Fennessy.
Thank you. Can I ask, I'm sorry. Do you want to get all these out of the way first, before I go talk to Brian?
I can do that, yes.
Why don't we do that?
Let's do that, all right, all right.
If you don't mind.
Counsel Fennessy.
I have a question for the city solicitor as to whether or not we can use funds from the Economic Development Reserve for Concord TV.
That's your Brian LeBrone question.
Mr. LeBrone.
I thought it was a legal question.
You haven't dodged the bullet.
Thought I was getting out of that one.
I, I mean, I think it's the council prerogative to decide if you want to use that reserve for this purpose. You know, if you can make an excess to say, you know, this has an economic development benefit, then I think the council has the prerogative to do that.
Thank you, Mr. LeBrone. Counsel Todd.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, I guess I'd like to ask the City Manager for his thoughts generally on the forecasting for funding for Concord TV on the part of, of the city government, as opposed to where we know the funds traditionally come from. Because as we, as you pointed out to us, we know that those funds are, are depleting as people, you know, go off cable.
Right.
The fund amounts are, what, what do you have kind of, in your, in your mind, what are you, how are you thinking about this going forward?
Sure. The, based on the direction, what we thought was going to happen several years ago, and is only just happening now, it looks like to me that the amount of money that we're bringing overall in from that, those fees will go down over time. And as you know, we only take a portion of those fees and allocate them for, for this purpose. So, those other fees, if you can think about it, it's all just one big pile, those other fees go into the general fund. So, essentially, you're taking money from the general fund, and you're shifting it over to, to whether, into, to pay for this. So, it just means the general fund costs go up a little bit more. So, even if, but in my mind, it's inevitable. You're going to be in that situation anyways, in that this amount will go down, the amount of money that goes in the general fund because of that, and then therefore, if you, if the costs for Concord TV go up as things go up, you have increasing costs, just like, just like any other department in the city, really, even though they're not a department, and revenues will go down. The only way to fill that gap is the general fund, which is property taxes.
Counsel Todd, follow-up.
Thank you. So, what was your thought then, a thought process in terms of the timing? Because I know that we, there's nothing in this budget certainly that addresses that issue of, of moving dollars from the general fund to Concord TV. What were you, what are you forecasting?
So, well, that, which is why during the presentation of this, I suggested holding these numbers solid, flat this year instead of going down, because the numbers are going down. And I think that's the only way that Concord TV can reasonably plan its capital and operating expenses, is to know they're going to have a reasonable amount of dollars. I would, I'd be afraid of them losing their talent like Michael back there in that little black box back there. He does, he does a fantastic job, but if you're going to, if you're going to keep good employees and keep the equipment and good, they need to know that they're going to have the, the revenue and the resources to do that. So, I didn't want to start cutting into those numbers, but even though the revenues associated with creating those numbers is going down. So, that's why I suggested holding it this year. Could it, is it very well worth the investment to have it go up a little bit? Sure it is. It's a, it's a good way to spend dollars. And I think particularly given the state of media in general in this country, and for your ability to, and the Concord School District's ability to reach out to the community in a factual way versus sometimes what we don't get, yeah, it makes a lot of sense.
Counsel Kurtz.
Thank you. And this is maybe a moment in the corner conversation, but we had, Counselor Schlosser had asked before about how much money is in the Economic Development Reserve Fund, and now we're looking at maybe taking more out of that. It would be useful to know that number. And then also, I would say, in terms of what you were just saying about Concord TV being able to plan, and this may reveal a lack of understanding on my part, but if we were to give them money, or appropriate money from the Economic Development Reserve Fund this year, is that something we would have to do again and again? Is there a way to increase the amount we're giving them in a way that allows them to sort of plan on that in the future, such that they can make plans for expansion without worrying that a future council may not give them the money from an Economic Development Reserve Fund?
Mr. City Manager.
We start at the end and work my...
Okay, great.
You could, you always have to worry about the future council, right?
Okay, right.
Because they, because they have the authority to do anything or undo anything that essentially you have done, essentially. You know, they're not always going to be as responsible as a group is, right? So, could you, could, could you add dollars in there without taking a lot of the Economic Development Reserve Fund? Yes. Do you always, would, if you started using the Economic Development Reserve Fund, would you have to continue to use it? No. So, you have, you have full flexibility in that. But just, but I, I think the, and to answer really the very first question in a, in a, I think, a very useful way is, I will come to you in the fall and say, you have this money available. Where would you like to put it? Would you like to put it into highway reserve? Would you like to put it into unassigned fund balance? Would you like to put it into bridge reserve, wherever it's going to be? One of those pots, I'm going to tell you, is the Economic Development Reserve. So, the more things you start taking out of that Economic Development Reserve, if you want to be able to do something else in the future, you need to put money back in. So, when I come to you and say, this is what I think, you'll know why I'm asking for that certain amount. So, yeah, Economic Development Reserve, you, you have that perfect flexibility to do, but you need to make sure you actually have something to take out when, when the time comes.
Thank you.
Any other, Counsel Kretovic?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. City Manager, while you powwow in the corner, which is becoming a really good phrase here, can you also calculate for me what is the cost for the 20,000 to the taxpayer, or if this were going to be part of the operational budget?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Counsel Brown?
Yes, I just would like to kind of extrapolate why I think it is an economic development benefit, because everything, we share videos, links digitally. That is how we can attract people into Concord. And when Concord TV goes and films these different events that we have, it really showcases the best of Concord. And because their crew has been to virtually every event we have, they know us well, they, they make us look the best. So, I think that this is great marketing for us, and it's a worthy investment.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments, questions? All right. I'm going to put this to vote. I will be voting against this motion. I think, I do not see this as an economic development investment. I see it as a civic government investment. And I know that I believe that it's appropriate to take this from the Economic Development Reserve. I'll be interested in the discussion after we take this vote, depending on how this vote goes, if there are alternatives. Counsel Fennessy.
Point of clarification. Are we voting just on Counselor Brown's amendment?
This is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, we are voting on the, the amendment, which proposes taking any money that we, or the $20,000 that Counsel Kretovic proposes to allocate to Concord TV, to take that, that money from the Economic Development Reserve Fund. Counsel Kurtz.
Forgive me, why are we voting on it before City Manager goes and discusses where the best place might be? What if he, in fact, comes back suggesting that the best place might be?
It's procedural.
It's procedural.
Yeah.
So, we may end up making this motion again.
Go all the way around.
Got it. Thank you. Okay.
All right. Okay. Counsel Schlosser.
I would, I guess, I asked a question relative to my ability to vote on this amendment. So, could we ask the City Manager to recess for a minute and just answer my question about whether, what his advice is on the best place?
We'll be in recess. Five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, you have the floor.
So, do I have a deal for you? It's, if, if we are able, if, if this 20,000 is the only dollars that you're going to take or add to the budget, you can add the 20,000 and keep the tax rate at 3.5 percent.
Okay.
And take it out of the general fund.
Okay.
There's no, there's no impact.
Okay.
Rounding.
Rounding.
Oh, rounding.
Now, if you take any more, then we're going off to 3.5 percent, and we're going up the ladder. So...
All right.
Okay.
So, okay, so you could do 20,000, add the 20,000, stay at 3.5 percent. If you take it out of the general fund, you do not need to take it out of the Economic Development Reserve.
Counsel Brown, would you like to withdraw?
Then I will withdraw my motion.
All right, and withdraw the second. Counsel Schlosser.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right.
Brian gets credit for that.
Thank you, Brian.
That wasn't me, that was Brian.
All right.
Was there a second to Counsel Kretovic's original motion?
There was.
Counsel Keach.
Yes. All right. So, now we're back to the original motion presented by Counselor Kretovic to add 20,000 to the Concord TV allocation, and the funding will come from the general fund. Is that your understanding, Counsel Kretovic?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Taking a long pause for Counsel Fennessy.
Is there a line there, or what?
I'm not surprised. Is it safe to take a vote? Everybody has said their piece. All right. The motion before you is to add the 20,000 to our allocation for Concord TV, with the funding coming from the general fund, with no impact on the tax rate. Okay? All right. The Chair votes yes. Counsel Fennessy?
Yes.
Counsel Foote?
Aye.
Counsel Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counsel Horn?
Yes.
I'm going to put on my glasses, excuse me. Counsel Keach?
Yes.
Counsel Kretovic?
Yes.
Counsel Kurtz?
Yes.
Counsel McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel McNamara?
Yes.
Counsel Schlosser?
Yes.
Counsel Schultz?
Yes.
Counsel Todd?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
All right. Passes unanimously. Are there any other proposed amendments to the city fiscal year 25 budget? Counsel Horn?
Before making a motion, would it be possible to ask some questions of the Parks and Rec Department regarding a motion I might make?
I guess that's permissible. Mr. Gill?
Workshop, yeah.
Yeah.
David.
Mayor members of the council?
Counsel Horn?
Regarding the Garrison Park new pool in the budget, I have a lot of concerns that we're going to build a half million dollar gorgeous new pool and not be able to staff it. So, you had testified earlier in the month that staffing is still an... So, you had testified earlier in the month that staffing is still an issue. And have you seen, that's been an issue over the last few years. Do you have any indication from this spring in hiring that this is going to change?
Not a, not much short-term. I, I think that since COVID and the number of people who are working, kids are, you know, different jobs and different opportunities. We do across-the-board see smaller pool. Is this year going to be good with all the locations? We'll know in another week or so. But I think staffing from a lifeguard perspective is going to continue to be a challenge.
Follow-up?
In our listening session, community meeting regarding the Garrison Park Pool, it had been asked that renovations, small renovations were done to open it this year. And I don't recall the amount of money to put into it that you had to.
General Services handles all the maintenance, and they are doing that as we speak. And Garrison Pool will be functional and full of water when we need it later this month.
And.
Follow-up?
Sorry, follow-up?
It's all right.
Do you have any idea if whatever renovations happened would be able to carry it for another year to run it next year?
That would be a General Services question, because they handle all the maintenance and the repairs. We do the staffing, the advertising, but they, they handle all the, the maintenance. That'd be a Chip Chesley question.
Mr. Chesley, I take my coffee with cream, no sugar.
And I don't need to go to the bathroom somewhere else.
So, the, uh, the pool wasn't open here? We were out of service for about a year or so.
This is year number three. It was closed for three years.
It was closed for three years. So, from our standpoint, it was kind of like going out in the garage and turning that car over for the first time to see if it's going to fire. And, uh, we, we actually went out and checked it early on just to make sure if there were problems that we could fix it for this season. But Garrison Pool is old. I say that probably being the oldest person in this chamber. But it's, it's something that at some point in time, as a community, we need to decide, are we going to replace it as a pool, or are we going to replace it as a splash pad? I mean, there will be, there will come a time when it's just going to become obsolete. Is it next year? I could give you probably a better answer when we decommission it this year, councillor, to be honest with you. I mean, I'm, I'm confident we'll get through this year. But, uh, as we decommission it, that'd be one thing that we would take a look at. And as we decommission it, if there were serious problems, we'd get a hold of Dave and the city manager and say, hey, there's a real issue with this thing, and we don't know if we can get it running next year. But I think we'd have been in a better position after the season, so.
Councill Yelson, councillor Horn, councillor Credit Vic?
Thank, your honor, if you would entertain that I can also ask some follow-up questions?
Yes, you may.
On the same topic without a motion. Mr. Chesley, Mr. Gill, as councillor Horn was referring to the community meeting that we had, there were residents that were present that were also highly concerned that we would spend some $560,000 on a pool that we may not have lifeguards for. And they made clear they did not want to spend that money. At the same time, up on the screen, we were provided a list of all the different pools and the participation, the usage of those pools over, um, the last five or so years. It could have been more than five years. And Garrison Pool was selected because there was low participation, so we closed it in 2019 when we didn't have enough staff. 2020, everybody was closed. 2021, it was easy to close it, though there were other pools that also had less usage. There is in the budget in 2026, Rollins Pool, which has very high attendance, and that's $700,000. I don't know, or I, I can't foresee, if we were to move this because of all the challenges that we have right now. I, I want to be honest with you. Garrison Pool is a great pool. I wouldn't want to see another pool have to close and go through the same stuff that Garrison Pool has had to go through over these last five years being closed, because we decided not to do maintenance, not to open a pool, and then another neighborhood is impacted so negatively. I also can't see us pushing something out and not allowing Rollins Pool, which does have such high usage, um, not to proceed forward. If you had a crystal ball and you had your choice of choice, would you go through with this project, or would you move Garrison Pool to another year perhaps or after Rollins? And I, I'm not saying, I know it's our decision.
100% your decision. We are very fortunate since 1938 to have seven outdoor pools. Uh, I think this, this council is, is, all the ones prior has continued to support seven outdoor pools, and that's 100% on where you want to go and what you want to do. I, I'll leave it on to your, your steps.
Thank you.
Councill Brown?
Thank you. Yes, just clarification. So, Garrison Park Pool is ready to go. Has, has it been renovated as was planned, or it is scheduled to be renovated?
It is, uh, currently the CIP to be renovated. As to what we're going to renovate, that's not yet defined in the CIP. Is it going to be a pool or a splash pad? What we did this spring was, as I, I said, trying to use the analogy with the old car in, in the barn, let's make sure it's going to start, because at that point in time, the interest was to have a pool out there this summer. So, we went out early just to check it, to make sure that everything was going to be operational, because even I couldn't recall off the top of my head how long it's been started. Dave was kind enough to share with me, it was, it's been three years. We did that work, and we're ready to fill the pool and ready to, you know, staff it, pending, you know, Dave's ability to recruit lifeguards and have the pool open for the summer.
Thank you, yes. Uh, oh, so there haven't been additional renovations? You just turned the key, the motor turned over, and we're going to go with it?
And if there were smaller repairs, like it needed a spark plug and an eight-spark plug engine, we fixed it.
Okay.
So, the pool will be ready to go?
Right.
This season. As to specifically line item issues, what needed to be repaired or anything, I'd have to check. I couldn't share with the council right now the details of those repairs.
Thank you, your honor.
They weren't major, because if they were major, they would have come to my desk.
So, we may be looking at, um, this, or we did appropriate the funds, or we will be appropriating the funds for this, um, in this budget to renovate it.
You'll be appropriating funds to make renovations at Garrison Pool. Is it going to be a pool or a splash pad? That's yet to be determined, because that decision has not yet been made by city council. But for next, for this coming season, it will be pool.
Thank you.
Thank you. Follow-up?
Yes, additional comment. Um, at that meeting, we heard from a lot of residents who had missed it being a pool. And one resident shared that 71 homes had changed ownership, and there were 21 new children in the area. So, where it may have been a slow pool or not as populated in the past, we may see that it is a very popular one. And they're anticipating at least 50% of the kids who attend Beaver Meadow School to go there. And, and the recommendation overwhelmingly from the public that it become a pool was because kids can bike to it and adults can walk to it, whereas a splash pad would require additional parking for kids that need to be driven there. So, I know this community is really excited about that splash pad, and I thank you for updating it and filling it, and I'll be attending it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councill Todd?
Yes, thank you, your honor. Uh, it's not really necessarily a question for right now deciding on the budget item here, because I think that, uh, it seems that the community has over, time and time again, as you pointed out, Mr. Gill, uh, said that they want to maintain, uh, seven pools, and that's why councillors since, what was it, 1938 have said, okay, that's what you want. We're going to find a way to fund that. It's going to come out of your taxes. You're all going to pay for it, but you're going to get the benefit of it. And it is pretty unique. I try to find another community our size, anywhere in New England, that has seven operating city public pools, I dare you.
I would say anywhere in the country.
Yeah. So, uh, so we're very unique for that reason, and that does obviously affect our quality of life, so that's fine. My question is, as you continue, what are your plans, Mr. Gill, for continuing outreach in terms of making that determination between a pool or a splash pad?
Based on the, the meeting we had that one evening, everybody present wanted to keep it as a pool. And I think it's just coming back to this body, um, to have a conversation and see where your direction is, where we want to go forward.
Follow-up?
Yes, uh, the, the reason I asked that question was, was there outreach from Second Start, which was, as we know, is a neighbor of the, of the?
Absolutely, yeah.
It was?
Yep. Sally Wood's been a great, she, she's good.
And what, did they have a preference as to which way they would prefer the pool?
They would prefer splash, I mean, a splash pad only because there's less, um, liability on their end. There's less supervision, there's less risk of something going wrong. The same reasons we like a splash pad, um, that where we, you know, we opened it last weekend, there's less liability.
Councill, uh, any follow-up?
That's fine, thank you.
Councill Credit Vic?
Yes, I have a follow-up to that. Um, uh, is it true that for Project Second Start, their insurance wouldn't allow any of the students to use a pool? But yet, the children would be able to use a splash pad. Are, are you aware of that?
I, I didn't talk about the insurance piece.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We do not have a motion for any change to the budget currently. Councill Horn?
Can I make a motion now, or?
You may.
Okay. I would like to make a motion on CIP 63 in regards to the Garrison Park Pool to the $560,000 to move that project out one year.
So, you'd like to move it from?
2025 to 2026.
2026?
I'll second that.
All right, would you like to speak to your motion?
I just feel like we're not going to be able to staff it, and this will give us time to not only further decide if it will be a splash pad or a pool in the community discussions, but also work on whatever issues that we're having with staffing, because if we, do we, are we going to be able to sustain having the seven pools? It's, I want it because it's near my ward, of course, and my constituents use it. But if we're not going to open it, then it just doesn't make this, make sense to build the brand-new pool right now until we've solved that issue. And to councillor Credit Vic's point also, we've got to decide on the other pools and moving those for that do get a lot more use. And I just think that we have, can take the extra year to figure this out.
Okay, thank you. Councill Credit Vic?
I'm going to support councillor Horn's motion. I would have hoped that we would put Rollins first, but since they're both going to wind up in 2026 at this point in time, I'll allow the city manager and staff to come back with recommendations next year. But I do think moving it this year is wise and prudent. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Councill Brown?
Yes, just clarification that this doesn't affect usage at all. This is just looking at renovation next year. It's fine. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Can I copy it? So.
That's your job.
That's my job. So, next year, just so I tip my hand a little bit, next year, when it came time for, well, first of all, Chip, can you do two pools in one year?
That would be challenging.
Can you do three?
We're getting close to vision of all.
Okay, so the reason, the reason I ask that, I think, it, the, this is the great opportunity for Rollins to look at adding a splash pad to Rollins in addition to the pool. Because in reality, if you look at, why do you want everybody to have to descend on White Park for the one splash pad in the community? Shouldn't there be one at Rollins? And shouldn't there be one over at Keach? Yes. So, the question is, when we come to this, um, I think that's the discussion you should be having next year when it comes time for Rollins. Not for this year, but just, so next year, you could be looking at doing three pools, doing no pools, doing one, or whatever, but it just, again, it's complication, but I just wanted to add that.
Councill Credit Vic?
Thank you, your honor. I mean, not to add even more onto the pile you just gave us, but the residents around Garrison Pool would love to have both as well. Unfortunately, we have 12 parking spots.
Right.
And that is a really big challenge, so I'm not making any changes.
Councill Fennessy?
Thank you. Um, I attended the community meeting, which, uh, Mr. Gill ran. And, um, it was interesting, because at RPAC, we had talked a lot about how, how successful the, the splash pad was at White Park. And I think, uh, some of that success, I think, scared off, uh, some of the residents around Garrison, uh, Park, because there's not really the parking spaces to support, uh, a great number of people showing up there. Obviously, there's members of the community there that enjoy having a pool. I do think that we probably need to have a larger conversation about whether or not we change or mix and match the supply of pools versus, uh, splash pads that we have in the city. And so, for that reason, I, I will support the motion to push this up. But, uh, I think in part because I think we need to have that larger conversation. It probably needs to start at RPAC. Uh, we started to have that conversation, which is why the initial proposal came to, uh, to change Garrison Park from a splash pad to a pool. After hearing, you know, feedback from residents, obviously, it doesn't make a lot of sense for that to be a splash pad based on what we have there. I will throw out there, there may be other areas perhaps, or underutilized recreation areas, perhaps on the other side of North State Street, that we should perhaps look at that might have better, uh, parking, uh, facilities to support, whether it's a pool or a splash pad or something else.
Councill Brown?
Yes, I will also support this, because I am in favor of waiting and seeing. And let's look at how many people do attend Garrison when, um, it is full and, um, learning more about that. I also think that because White Park was so popular from their splash pad and that municipalities around us do not have the city pools, that we can increase our, um, non-resident pool user pass. I think it should be more than 125. I think it should be 200. If it's that popular, we have seven pools or six pools and a splash pad. We can attract people to our community because of this. So, I don't know if, uh, we have that capability tonight to, your honor, to change that, or? No? Okay. Well, I will be supporting this motion all the same. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other, councillor Kurtz?
Schultz.
Again, upgrade.
The hour is late, and I haven't had any coffee. I'm sorry.
I know, we share a birthday.
We do, so it makes sense.
I will be supporting the motion as well, and as a quick footnote, not even saying I know if this is a good idea or not, but there are no longer any adult, um, water aerobics classes at any of the year-round pool memberships. Also have, by the way, have been reduced at the local hotels. There used to be multiple places where you could get a year-round membership. Now, there's only two. So, maybe there could be a consideration for adult, um, options for these pools as well. Just to, just to throw it out there in case it's helpful.
Thank you, councillor.
If there is a need.
Any further discussion? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, I will put it to the vote. Uh, I vote yes. Councill Fennessy?
Yes.
Councill Foot?
Aye.
Councill Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Councill Horn?
Yes.
Councill Keach?
Yes.
Councill Credit Vic?
Yes.
Councill Kurtz?
Yes.
Councill McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Councill McNamara?
Yes.
Councill Schlosser?
Yes.
Councill Schultz?
Yes.
Councill Todd?
Yes.
And councillor Brown?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes. Any other, any other proposed amendments to the fiscal '25 budget?
Could I, could we have a discussion about an item that I've been trying to investigate over time? And I've had a brief conversation with the city manager about it today. Just trying to understand, and that's CIP 83 relative to Burnham Brook. As many of us attended the Pennacook Village Common, or the Pennacook Village meeting for residents relative to the improvements on Whitney Road and Monitor Way. I remember a gentleman right at the end of the, the evening stating that, is this a done deal? And, you know, they were told no. And so, um, since that time, I've spent some time trying to understand. And I actually visited, um, Whitney Road between, um, Tools Falls Road and the end of Whitney as it exists today. And I went and looked at the failed, well, it's not failed, but the, the water line that's in jeopardy. And I'm trying to understand, uh, the cost associated with fixing that. And it does need attention, and I'm, and I'm, and I also, at the meeting, they talked about, um, asking for the city for $6 or $8 million to finish the part of Whitney Road from where it terminates now south to where the proposed major portions of the development are. And I guess my question, or my, what I'm trying to understand is, I think on the city- And I guess my question, or my, what I'm trying to understand is, I think on the city CIP for Whitney Road, it was 28 million, I read something in a newspaper that was 16 million, I just, I don't understand the cost and what is included in this, this road, proposed roadway if it gets developed. And I just, I think about that gentleman, and, you know, for the optics of this, you know, the community said, no, it's not a done deal, but here we are a month later, and we're proposing to spend $500,000 on engineering and design, and in 2026, spend $5 million to replace the culvert and make the water line suitable and safe. There, I do believe the water line does need attention, and we do need to move forward to make that safe and reliable for all of the development in that area. I'm wondering if some, if we can have a discussion on some of the alternatives that were looked at as part of the culvert replacement. So I look kind of, I look at this very simplistic. Today, it's a trail, and, you know, if we spend $5 million, is this Concord's Bridge to Nowhere? Or, or are we, are we doing this for development? I don't understand that, and I would, I'm not looking to make any motions, I'm just trying to understand, so the general public understands.
Understood.
Yes, just being one minute, trying to get to both of those projects on my different systems here, so I can talk to them both, because I think you're talking two separate projects, right? You're talking the Burnham Brook culvert, and you're talking the Whitney Road extension? Right. So that's 502 and 83. So I think I'm looking at, may I?
Yes, you may.
I'm looking at the stormwater, stormwater improvements. The other one is new road connections. Right. Right, so let me get to, let me get them both, because they got, and I'll talk about them both at the same time here. 87, keep going, keep going. 502, what was the other one? 83, thank you. I'm close, 502, okay. So, first of all, all the stuff you heard about, that was a presentation done by a developer wanting city money to city, the city to pay for their project, right, so they could do their project, nothing to do with the city. So, you got that. I just want to make sure everybody at home understands that, too. Thanks for. This was a, this was a sales pitch to try to convince folks to that the city of Concord needed to build their improvements for them. May be a good idea, may, may not be a good idea. So the Burnham Brook 83, what you have in your budget, if you vote on your budget, you will see there's an item for $500,000 in 2025, paid for by Water Geo Bonds, tax increment financing, and general donations. So let me talk about those pieces. The Water Geo Bonds, obviously, general obligation bonds from the water rate. Tax increment financing would be, there's a tax increment financing district up in that area that, for exit 17 that you created. City Council would need to approve an additional project for construction and the dollar amounts for that, and then capture the dollars in the TIF, the money that's generated, the TIF would then go to pay that portion, eventually pay that $100,000, okay? You haven't done that, you haven't discussed that, it's something you'd have to do. And then there is $165,000 from general donations. That discussion is a discussion we had with Wind Waste, to talk, because the culvert is located next to their facility, not the culvert, the, the water line is next to a facility along an area there, so they would pay a portion of that. You, we don't have those dollars, we haven't agreed on those dollars, you haven't accepted those dollars, and you'd have to have a public meeting and a public hearing to accept those dollars and do that. So the reason it's, all those, those three items are asterisks, that's because when you approve this budget, you don't, you're saying, we're specifically not approving this project, because you really can't approve the project, because you don't have the money. You don't have the, you don't have the TIF money, you don't have the donations. So what would happen would be, if we worked with a, any, any person out there who wanted to give us money, you know, for whatever purpose, would work with that, you'd come back, it'd be a discussion that you'd have, you'd put together a development agreement, or an agreement, you'd have a public hearing, and then you'd make a decision whether or not to do that, even to just do this analysis, to do this design. Looking at designs, the thought that we had when we put together this budget was, if you're going to be going out and making that type of improvement, do you want to make it in such a way that you're taking care of the same issue as the whole culvert that's out there? Essentially, you're creating a small bridge which would allow access to the south, to the property heading towards Sewell Falls Road. Maybe you don't want to do that. When we look at the design, maybe you're going to look at that and say, you know what? Let's do an interim fix on this, and we're just going to focus on this, and we're not concerned about providing access to the south. All we're going to do is take and fix the culvert, or fix the water line. So you'd look at that and see whether or not that's what you want to do, and then what would come back wouldn't be a $5 million project, it would be a $500,000 project, a million, whatever, whatever it's going to be. So that's way down the line as you get there. The, and the idea here, that's just 83, in the past, the city has had the idea of connecting Whitney Road from where it ends now all the way down to Sewell Falls. But the question would be, remember, it's industrial property, how should that develop? You've got a rail line that's in there, you've got a water line that's in there, you need to bring a sewer line through there. How is the best way to do that, and for what purpose are you doing it? That's why that is out in 2027, to look at the design with 2028 being construction. And if you notice, the funding source on both of those is general donations, there's no city money involved in that whatsoever. Because what you've said, what you're saying to the community is, if a developer wants to do this, we'd be willing to take their money, or have them build the project, and then potentially accept the road, and then it'd become a city road after that, but they're going to pay for it. You have a developer who's saying, I'd rather have the city pay for this, I'd rather have all the taxpayers pay for my road so I can, so I can receive the, the benefits of this, let, let the, let the community pay for this. And we're saying, in this budget, we're saying, that's a good project for the developer, why not, why not have the developer build that? Now, is there somewhere in between? Sure. But right now, at this budget, if you were to approve this budget, what you're saying is, we're going to look at a design for how this water should be improved, you may want to do a bridge over there, essentially a large culvert over there, but that's something a decision you'd make next year. And at the same time, you're saying Whitney Road Extension, probably a good idea to open up that, that property, but a good idea for the developer to pay, actually pay for that instead of the taxpayer paying for that. Could you change your mind? Could a future council change their mind in 2027, 2028, 2030, 2032? Of course.
May I follow up?
Yes.
Is that water line that comes up through the property, is that on a dead end to that development?
It comes all the way through and connects into the development for exit 17. And the reason that's important is we're trying to create a loop. When that project came in, we wanted, because you were only getting water from one source, now it comes in from both ways.
It does.
So our concern is if we, if we don't do this improvement, and we lose that line, could potentially we shut down, just turn the water, we'll have an environmental problem in the, in the Brook, of course, temporarily, could we shut that down and feed from the other, from the other side? Yes. Could that preclude additional development from helping, happening up at 17 and lowering Pennacook's tax, tax rate? Yes, it could.
So it does, so the water, the water system does make a loop, and so if it needed to be shut down for repair, it could be temporarily.
Correct.
So as part of this, has the team considered just directionally boring a new water line underneath the culvert and not worry about the culvert?
May I have, may I have my directional boring assistant come forward?
He's directional, but he's never boring.
Yeah, very good.
I appreciate that, thank you. Good evening. So yes, there was, last year, there was $75,000 of city money that was appropriated to study the culvert. I would note that the culvert is not owned by the city, it's owned by Wind Waste. It's a private culvert that happens to be an inesment that the city has over Wind Waste's property for future extension of Whitney Road, as well as the water line. But we, we spent the funds to study the culvert, to come up with options, there were three options that were studied by the consultant, draft report was prepared in January, we're still waiting for the, the final report to be prepared and issued, but there were basically three options that were looked at. One of them is, is daylighting the Brook, so pulling out the culvert that is there, which is a corrugated metal pipe, which is partially collapsed, pulling out the, the existing culvert that's there, which would restore the Brook, daylighting it, because it'd be open to the sky, and directionally boring our, our water line underneath it. So that was one that was looked at. We looked at basically doing a, an RCP pipe, reinforced concrete pipe, you know, kind of replacing the culvert that's there in kind. And then the third one is, I'm going to call it a concrete open box culvert structure that would, that would facilitate future extension of Whitney Road, what if it was going to come to pass? Right now, we're, you know, the, the numbers that you're seeing in here are more on the end of the open bottom box culvert to facilitate the long-term plan for Whitney Road. We haven't had any conversations with Wind Waste, we're waiting to have the final report prepared so we can share that with them. They have agreed to nothing, we've had some preliminary conversations about a partnership, and that's really about it. The other thing I would add on to the manager's comments about Whitney Road Extension is, there's a map line of future street, so in addition to various master plans that talk about Whitney Road Extension, which has been out there for decades, in addition to the water main that we already have through there, in addition to our capital improvement program for CIP 502, we also have a map line of future street that contemplates that going through there. And I would suggest that there's probably some cost contamination between the two projects whereby CIP 502 at $27 million anticipates building whatever that culvert structure would have to be, and CIP 83 also anticipates building that culvert structure. So there's, there's some cross pollination there between the two, or they're both double counting that cost is probably the better way of saying it.
And if I could add one piece to that, which would be, when we looked at the options, as you know, once, if we were to daylight that, the regulatory complexity involved with undaylight, undaylighting that in the future are quite large. So, because once you open that up and have that Brook reestablished, it's a Brook, right? It's not, it doesn't have that impact on it. You remove that impact, if we come back 10 years from now and say, we're going to drop a, a major culvert in there, you have a whole regulatory process that you're going to have to go through that's going to complicate things and dramatically increase prices. So that's kind of why we were looking at, what's the best long-term thing to do?
I appreciate the effort.
Counselor.
May I? Sorry.
It's all right.
I really appreciate the effort and the explanation, I just, as someone who is fully responsible, I think the most simplistic thing we could do to make sure we have a loop as soon as possible is to go in and hire someone to directionally bore to make sure that that loop remains effective and resilient. And then I, frankly, I believe that, you know, any $5 million for a bridge that may or may not lead to development, you know, that's, that's, that's a lot of money to spend, and that's why I asked the question, and I appreciate the answers between this disparity between the two different estimates, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further amendments to the budget? Fiscal 25 budget. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the Finance Committee.
We moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded, all, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I will declare a 15-minute recess, after which we will convene as City Council. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. I will declare a 15-minute recess, after which we will convene as City Council.
I move this amendment to make a motion for the general fund to add $150,000 for events to be funded from economic development reserve, reduce the human services software maintenance budget by $14,000, reduce the legal department other communities revenue line by $70,355, reduce the tax rate increase to 3.5% by adding $10.3 million to assessed value real growth, increase investment income by $100,000, increase motor vehicle income by $64,000. And for CIP 515, move snowmaking $250,000 from fiscal year '27 to fiscal year '26. Add $20,000 to Conquer TV and reduce CIP number 63 by $560,000, moving this project to fiscal year '26, and reduce bond authorization by $560,000 for Garrison Park Pool. Do I have a second?
Is there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, I'll put it to the vote. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? We are going to hold a public hearing on the budget as we've worked on it. We're finished with the Finance Committee's work sessions. Madam City Clerk, would you please read the items?
Absolutely. The first item is a resolution fixing and determining the amount of money to be appropriated by the City of Concord for fiscal year 2025. Second item is a resolution for the annual capital closeout and repurposing of capital project funds. Then there's a resolution appropriating for fiscal year 2025 the sum of $53,551,745 for capital projects, authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes, and the amount of $45,286,110 accepting $3,508,925 in federal grant funds, and accepting $401,710 in grant funds for And then there's an ordinance amending the code of ordinances specific to water use rates, water fixed charges, sewer use rates, and sewer fixed charges.
Would there be any objection if we held a public hearing on all four of those for A, B, C, and D together?
No.
All right. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone who would like to testify on any of those items in the budget? Anyone like to testify? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
I did look at the minutes from last year. I did not see a recusal for you, Counselor Brown. Obviously, it would be at your discretion or the mayor's discretion if you recuse yourself.
I thought that Counselor Brown had recused herself.
No, I don't believe so, because I think we discussed it.
Counselor, please.
I think, Your Honor, the operational budget does include the compensation portion for all employees, including the rate increase on healthcare benefits, as well as the step adjustments for anybody within the police department. I'm not sure why there wasn't a recusal last year. I'm going to bet there was a recusal the year before. Perhaps this is an item we take under advisement. For clarity, the Rules Committee is looking, I would think, under Rule 60, the counselor had a conflict of interest because compensation is included in this, and if it was missed last year, it was probably oversight.
That's why I'm confused. Counsel, what I'm going to do is, as the chair, I'm just going to rule that you recuse yourself just from that portion of the budget. Just from the police department portion of the budget.
Your Honor, I'm just surprised because I know that we discussed this with city solicitor Kennedy at the time, and it was during the conversation of the, it was understood that it was the conversation of the compensation, but not anything. So I, you know, and I thank the city solicitor for reviewing the minutes because I believe that we looked at this carefully because there had been a change to the rule last year before this happened. So I would be comfortable with maintaining, continuing in the same vein as last year per that advice.
As an example, when I was serving on the Board of Directors of the Greater Concord Chamber of Commerce, I traditionally recused myself from that portion of the budget whenever we took a vote, because although I didn't, you know, although I didn't directly benefit from it, it could be considered to be a conflict of interest since the organization and according to the rules and our ordinances, because that organization was going to directly benefit. So therefore, I recused myself from that. I'm going to rule that you should recuse yourself. If you'd like to challenge it and put it to a vote, you may.
Your Honor, respectfully, I do, because I feel like that is, it is extremely broad. You know, that anything that might have the word "police" in it, that I would recuse myself. I think it goes against the intention that I may financially gain, or, you know, I am voting on the entire budget, not something specific to, you know, my husband. So, you know, I think that it's, I feel like, to recuse myself on anything that mentions "police" is excessively broad. So, you know, I would, I trust that city solicitor Kennedy gave me good advice last year, and that is why I voted in that way, so.
Well, this, yes, county solicitor.
I apologize for interrupting. Matt Walsh did find 2022 minutes, and it says that Counselor Brown recused herself from voting on compensation adjustment lines and items related to the Concord Police Department. And I would just note, I, you know, just from my experience with the former city solicitor, he was very careful about not notifying individual council members whether or not they had a conflict. That was really something that we've always, as legal department, said that the counselors need to decide on their own. So I'm not sure what, if any, conversations you had with him, but that is the position he took, and it is the one that I've been taking too.
And the recusal in 2022 was on compensation lines and?
It was on compensation adjustment lines and items related to the Concord Police Department.
Okay, thank you.
May I, Your Honor?
Yes, you may.
But in 2023, there was no recusal.
I did not see anything in the minutes.
So I think in looking at myself, you know, personally, I am not gaining. This is a broad brush, so.
Counsel, yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Please, please.
No, I just feel that obviously it was after a conversation with the former city solicitor that I then didn't recuse because I maybe didn't need to.
Well, I am ruling that it is a conflict of interest, specifically because included in the budget and in those line items is compensation for your spouse, as well as benefits for your spouse and your family. And this is not, I mean, this is in no way a denigration of, you know, you or your family, of course, because we value your husband's service, you know, to the city. However, I do believe it is a conflict of interest. If you'd like to challenge, and I think you've indicated you'd like to challenge, that means we'll put it up to a vote of the City Council. And I'm not sure how to phrase this, Madam City Clerk. Yes, Counsel Fantasy.
Thank you. I'd just like to make a quick comment. I think it's, I guess I would be surprised if the city solicitor provided advice regarding whether or not it was a conflict. I certainly have had that conversation and been told it's up for individual members to make that decision based on their circumstances. I think that the counselor ought to be able to make a decision, whether she participates or not. So I think I'll probably vote against the chair because I think it's really up for her to make that decision. I will say that I do believe that the wise move would be to recuse oneself in this circumstance.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments?
I will just say that I did not participate. I did recuse myself from the conversation. So voting on this is voting in support of the City Council in their decision.
Okay.
That's how I, that's how I perceive it.
All right, thank you. So the vote, the motion is that Counsel Brown should recuse herself? So if you're in favor of that, please signify by saying aye or yes. And if you disagree with that, please signify by saying no. Yes, Counsel Horn.
Can you just be very specific what she's recu, what you're saying she should be recusing herself from what we're voting on?
Yes.
His, like, his compensation.
Basically, on the compensation adjustment lines and items related to the police department, which are in the operating budget. Counsel Kurtz.
Just to clarify as well, if we believe that this should not be a decision of the chair, but should be a decision of the individual with whatever may come from that decision, we would vote against?
All right. All right, City Clerk? I'll ask you to take the vote.
Question.
I'm sorry, another question? I'm sorry, Counsel Schatzler.
So the City Council has the prerogative to require a City Council to recuse themselves from a vote? Is that our prerogative?
According to the city rules, the mayor has the right to, the mayor has the right to determine whether there is a conflict. According to the city rules, the mayor has the right to ju, to, the mayor has the right to determine whether there is a conflict of interest.
I see.
But the counselor involved has the right to call for a challenge, to challenge that and ask the body to vote.
Thank you.
And that's the situation right now.
Your Honor.
Counsel Kretovic.
The rule states any member of the council can ask the mayor to make a ruling. So that is where it starts. And then that is what I asked under Rule 60, courtesy to Counselor Brown, if she would want to recuse.
Are we ready for the vote?
Shall I start with Counsel Brown?
Certainly.
Counsel Brown.
So the vote is, so I will vote against.
No.
I will vote no.
Mayor Champlin.
Yes.
Counsel Fantasy.
No.
Counsel Foot.
Nay.
Counsel Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counsel Horn.
No.
Counsel Keach.
Yes.
Counsel Kretovic.
Yes.
Counsel Kurtz.
No.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel McNamara.
Yes.
Counsel Schlosser.
No.
Counsel Schultz. And Counsel Todd.
Yes.
It's like it's a tie.
The mayor decides.
It is a tie. Seven to seven, tie vote.
Well.
So is that a, is that no?
It's a tie.
Yes, the motion fails. The motion fails. All right. Very well. Okay.
Oh, because it is.
All right. Counselor.
Are you okay with another recusal?
Yes.
Item? Okay. I'd like to recuse myself from any items relative to the Crisis Center of Central New Hampshire. Although I don't have a direct financial conflict, there may be a perception of one because I work for the administrative office who manages funds for that program.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other recusals? All right. Seeing none.
Clarification, Your Honor.
Yes.
Per the previous, per the vote, so it is ruled that I am recusing myself from the.
No, the motion failed. So you're fine to vote.
Oh.
It's your prerogative.
It's your prerogative.
Oh, I thought. Okay, that's not how I understood it. Okay. All right. Thank you.
I understood the opposite too.
What is that?
No. Because she made the challenge to your ruling.
Oh, you're right.
Your ruling stands because her challenge failed.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Sorry, the hour is late. The day is long. You're right. You're right. So your motion to challenge fails. I'm sorry.
Right. So that I am recusing myself from the police compensa, only the police compensation lines.
And items related.
And related, items related to the police.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Thank you, Counselor and Counselor.
I'm not your Counselor or anybody else.
All right. All right. Okay. So public hearing action is on item five.
Yes.
Okay. Do you need to read that again? Did you already read that? I didn't.
I did read it. I can read it again if you'd like.
Nope, that's okay. We've done that. We passed the amendment. So now the vote is on item five, resolution fixing and determining the amount of money to be appropriated by the City of Concord for fiscal year '25, et cetera. Move approval?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? I'd be surprised if there was any. Madam City Clerk.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Champlin, or Mayor Champlin. I'm so sorry.
Old habits die hard. I know. Yes.
Counsel Fantasy.
Yes.
Counsel Foot.
Aye.
Counsel Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counsel Horn.
Yes.
Counsel Keach.
Yes.
Counsel Kretovic.
Yes.
Counsel Kurtz.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel McNamara.
Yes.
Counsel Schlosser.
Yes.
Counsel Schultz.
Yes.
And Counsel Todd.
Yes.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, item number six.
It is a resolution for the annual capital closeout and repurposing of capital project funds.
Move approval.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Fantasy.
Your Honor, do we need to make any amendments to this based on what we did with the CIPs?
Mr. Lebrun?
Based on the Garrison Pool CIP, the $560,000 was what the Finance Committee made a revision on. Another $14,000 was, that was from capital closeout. My recommendation is to leave it in there and we'll put it into the CIP. It'll just carry over for another year.
Okay. Thank you.
Super. Thank you, sir.
While I'm here, when we get to the capital portion, can I come up and just have a clarification on the capital resolution?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Madam City Clerk, will you take the vote?
Yes. Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Champlin.
Yes.
Counsel Fantasy.
Yes.
Counsel Foot.
Aye.
Counsel Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counsel Horn.
Yes.
Counsel Keach.
Yes.
Counsel Kretovic.
Yes.
Counsel Kurtz.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel McNamara.
Yes.
Counsel Schlosser.
Yes.
Counsel Schultz.
Yes.
And Counsel Todd.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes. Madam City Clerk, item number seven.
It is a resolution appropriating for fiscal year 2025 the sum of $53,551,745 for capital projects authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes in the amount of $45,286, $286,110.
Move approval. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Lebrun, would you like to come up and visit?
Thank you, and I apologize for the confusion. In the resolution that we prepared earlier, the amendment included the $560,000 for capital and also $560,000 to reduce bonding. And I just, if we could just clear, have the council clarify that that is included in this resolution so that when we get to the bonding agency, they don't push it back on us and say, hey, you got to fix this. So if you could do that, I appreciate it.
Okay. Does that require a motion?
If you could, if you could do a motion to rescind $560,000 from, or reduce the capital project by $560,000 and then rescind or reduce the bond authorization by $560,000.
So moved. Seconded.
Thank you. Moved and seconded.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right. Let's take your vote. Do you have it, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Sorry, didn't mean to rush you.
No, that's okay.
Mr. Mayor, is this the vote on the amendment?
This is the vote on the amendment. Yes, Counselor. Thank you for asking.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Champlin.
Yes.
Counsel Fantasy.
Yes.
Counsel Foot.
Aye.
Counsel Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counsel Horn.
Yes.
Counsel Keach.
Yes.
Counsel Kretovic.
Yes.
Counsel Kurtz.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counsel McNamara.
Yes.
Counselor Schlosser.
Yes.
Counsel Schultz.
Yes.
And Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Very well. Now, you're set. We will vote on the original resolution on item number seven.
Move approval. Seconded.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Champlin.
Yes.
Counsel Fantasy.
Yes.
Counsel Foot.
Yay.
Counsel Grady Sexton. Counsel Horn.
Yes.
Counsel Keach.
Yes.
Counsel Kretovic.
Yes.
Counsel Kurtz.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel McNamara.
Yes.
Counsel Schlosser.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
And Counsel Todd.
Yes.
Motion passes. Madam City Clerk, item number eight.
It is an ordinance amending the code of ordinances specific to water use rates, water fixed charges, sewer use rates, and sewer fixed charges.
Move approval.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to the vote. Madam City Clerk.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Champlin.
Yes.
Counsel Fantasy.
Yes.
Counsel Foot.
Yay.
Counsel Grady Sexton. Counsel Horn.
Yes.
Counsel Keach.
Yes.
Counsel Kretovic.
Yes.
Counsel Kurt.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel McNamara.
Yes.
Counsel Schlosser.
Yes.
Counsel Schultz.
Yes.
And Counsel Todd.
Yes.
Congratulations. You've just passed the fiscal year 2025 budget. Now it's time for comments by City Councilors. Counsel, Counselor Kretovic, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Rules Committee has been trying for the last month to get together to look at a couple of the rules that are already in existence as well as our charter. We're not looking at the ethics ordinance anymore. One of the items is Rule Number 6D. There was a new advisory that came out from the Municipal Association, the New Hampshire Municipal Association, that we may be requesting a revision to that rule, but at this point in time, the rule stands as we presented it this evening. I just wanted to let the other counselors know that that may be coming up in the next couple of months for an option for revision to that rule.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Schultz.
Yes, I just wanted to highlight the fact that tomorrow is the last day that voters can change their party registration and that would impact potentially someone's choice of ballot for the state primary, which is on the 10th of September. Also, the filing period for a number of interesting open seats, governor, executive council, state senate, and probably open seats for state representative, county offices, et cetera. And that period is from June 5th to June 14th. And the timing is different than the hours that the offices open, I think. Anyway, I encourage folks to run if they want to.
Thank you. Counsel Brown.
Yes, I have a question for Counselor Kretovic over the Rules Committee, and I have some announcements too.
Sure.
Will the Rules Committee be looking at financial disclosures of counselors?
Yes, we have a draft financial disclosure that we're going to be looking at. It's based on what they do at the state. What was discussed with the previous Rules Committee is, it's a voluntary disclosure, but it would allow that if you had something listed there and for, for example, it was missed, it would still be counted as a recusal because you had previously disclosed.
Oh, and I have two notices. This week, the Department of Ed and the School Board are meeting. And considering that our 56 and a half percent of our taxes are driven by the School Board, that is a really important meeting to attend. And also on the 7th is the Joint City Council School Board Meeting. Both meetings are going to be at 38 Liberty Street.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other announcements? Counsel Grady Sexton.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to thank all of the city staff and, of course, the city manager for all the incredible and extensive work that went into this budgeting process. It's a lot. So thank you.
Here, here. Any other comments? All right, then. Let me just say, I second what Counsel Grady Sexton said. In fact, she preempted me, but I'm glad that she did because it's worth saying twice. The city staff has, since the beginning of the year, put in an immense amount of time, as has the city manager and the deputy city manager for finance and the deputy city manager for community development in pulling together what everybody I've spoken to has said was a very, very tight, well-thought-out budget. But I also want to congratulate this body. Counsel Schlosser and I were chatting a couple of minutes ago during the recess and talking about how it is a steep learning curve to roll up your sleeves and dive into a city budget. 650 some odd pages of data and information, all of the testimony from the city manager and his staff, and all of the public testimony that we hear. And you have to take that and you have to boil it down and you have to make a sound decision. And this city council, I think, has risen to the occasion. And I congratulate you on approving what I think is an excellent budget for the city. We have our challenges economically, financially, but I think that you've assured that the city services that our residents rely on, safety, general services, parks and recreation, our library, and our other facilities will continue for the next year to function and to serve our people. And you'll be able to turn on the water and have a glass of water and flush the toilet and know it's not in your basement. So congratulations. I think you've done a great job. And thank you for all your work. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Some more?
Seconded by everyone.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.